It's very exciting to see you. I do have one announcement. If our Eagle Scout is up here, could you meet President Lopez Caneva right here? Ben, if you are already here, could you just speak? Ben, come on down. I thought I saw you. Thanks so much. Why don't we just start it up and give Ben a big round of applause? She needs to talk to you about something. So. Just a few things. My name is Bob McBride. Before we formally reopen our board meeting, we've already been meeting, but this is an open board meeting. And I'm very fortunate to be the superintendent of Lockport Township High School District 205, and even more fortunate that you are here tonight. It is certainly award season. Next week, on May 17th, we will award over $100,000 in local scholarships to students who have done extraordinary things in their four years here at Lockport Township High School. And it's utterly fitting and completely appropriate. We have athletes on the field right now in baseball who are seniors, having their senior night. We've got lacrosse. It is absolutely appropriate that we take account of the great things that our students are doing. We have not met as a Board of Education. We have not started a regular session since August. September, October, November, December, January, February, March, and April. We have been in this room because we have had so many porters who have been national or state award winners. And that for you as community members should really lift your heart and lift your spirit. Porters are doing amazing, amazing things. Tonight, we're here to acknowledge some of those porters who are doing just that. I would also ask you to stay because every May, we acknowledge our retirees. These are people who have lent their lives to public education. And if you could join me in honoring them just with your presence, as we can bear witness to the great work that they've done. Really, everything we're doing here tonight is about giving testimony to the great things that other people have done, and then all of us being witnesses. Because when we talk about it, and we say it, and we acknowledge it, it makes it even more real. Nobody in this room can leave unchanged. Because you'll hear things in the names of people that you'll never be able to fully get out of your memory, even if you might forget tomorrow. It's still in there somewhere. So we're trying to memorialize them into time and into history. I want to turn it over to President Ann Lopez Caneva. I always remind audiences that Ann Lopez Caneva, Michael Travis, Marty Borisma, Dr. Sandra, Shimon Rogers, Veronica Shaw, who's joining us remotely tonight, these are volunteers. They are volunteering. Mr. Zain Navara, who's coming in, they're volunteers representing you in government that kind of works face to face with you, public schooling. Pretty amazing. So could you give our board members a big round of applause? I would appreciate it.
Okay, first, we just need to get back into our regular board meeting. So do I have a motion to reconvene the regular meeting? All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Dr. Shimon Rogers. All right, roll call. Yes, and at this point, we are going to have our Eagle Scout, Ben Carabel, and he's going to lead us in the pledge.
Oh, it's right here too.
Right here too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next, we're just going to pass on to Mr. John Green.
Good evening. My name is John Green and principal at East Campus. As I was speaking to a few people this evening, we usually have two, maybe three resolutions before a board meeting. Tonight, we have 10. So it's a great evening to celebrate our student success as well as our retiring staff. This first resolution is recognizing Ben Carabel for achieving Eagle Scout status. Whereas Ben Carabel, a senior student at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved Eagle Scout status, the highest rank awarded by the Boy Scouts of America for his project creating a garden for Our Lady of the Woods Church in Palest Park. And whereas Ben Carabel has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, community, and troop number 318. And now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Ben Carabel is hereby recognized for achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout from the Boy Scouts of America on this 15th day of May 2023. Congratulations, Ben. Now at this time, can I have our girls' powerlifting team, please, come to the front? This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School Girls Powerlifting Team. The team earned second place in the state of Illinois. Team members include Kimberly Alcala, Veronica Baffia, Cameron Cruz, Reagan Mahalik, and Madeline Rudman. We also had three individual state champions. First place state champion in the 148-weight class, Madeline Rudman. First place state champion in the 114-weight class, Reagan Mahalik. And first place state champion in the 105-weight class, Cameron Cruz. Whereas Lockport Township High School Girls Powerlifting Team competed in the Illinois High School Powerlifting Association State Competition on May 6, 2023, at Stagg High School in Palest Hills, Illinois. And whereas the students were aided and guided by their coaches, Corey Dillard and Joe Kinnane, and have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 15th day of May 2023. Congratulations. And now at this time, will Nicholas Alexandros, please, come to the front? This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School Junior Nicholas Alexandros. Whereas Lockport Township High School Student Nicholas Alexandros competed in the Illinois High School Powerlifting Association State Competition on May 6, 2023, at Stagg High School in Palest Hills, Illinois, and earned the title of Boyd's Individual State Powerlifting Champion. And whereas Nicholas Alexandros was aided and guided by his coaches, Corey Dillard and Joe Kinnane, and have brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 15th day of May 2023. Congratulations, Nicholas.
Our resolutions will continue now with our Activities Director, Mr. Brian Lesnar.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the All-State GICAS to come on down. Resolution recognizing... Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School Group Interpretation Students Graham Carlson, Dylan Curry, Jersey Joniak, Madeline Lee, and Dominic Lencioni. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Group Interpretation competed in the IHSA Drama and Group Interpretation State Finals on March 25, 2023, at Glenwood High School in Chatham, Illinois, and was named All-State Cast for their roles in Sky High, written by Paul Hernandez, Bob Schooly, and Mark McCorkle, adopted for the stage by Dr. Laura Gilbert. And whereas the students brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, and school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 15th day of May 2023. Next up, I'd like to invite members of the State Champion LTHS Winter Guard Team. Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of the LTHS Winter Guard Team Gabrielle Brewer, Adeline Shumeluski, Jordan Conway, Isabel Theo Cruda, Sarah Eaton, Annabeth Klosinski, Abigail Grease, Brianna Kelderhouse, Carly Kawalski, Mara Kubis, Camila Light, Genesi Ramirez, Sophia Reed, Lorelei Sergine, Ella Sivinskis, Ally Washington, Katie Washington, Zoe West. the Lockport Township High School District 205 Winter Guard competed at the 2023 Midwest Color Guard Circuit Scholastic A Class Championship on April 1, 2023, on the campus of Victor J. Andrew High School, and claimed the title of Grand Champions, equivalent to State Champions in their division. And whereas on April 13, 2023, Winter Guard competed in the World Championships in Dayton, Ohio, and earned 19th out of 124 teams international. And whereas head coach John Collier, assistant Melissa Petruski, and Katie Mahoney have aided and guided in their accomplishments. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, hereby recognize these students for this outstanding achievement and their dedication to their families, schools, and communities. And that this resolution was passed by the Lockport Township High School District 205 Board of Education, Lockport, Illinois, on this 15th day of May 2023. Next up, we have our state and nationally recognized Skills USA Team. Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School Skills USA Team. First place gold in teamwork, Tannis Savalas, Seth Cavett, John Sholton, Kyle Brown. Architectural drafting, Emily Doe. 3D visualization and animation, Natalia Hansel, Tristan Merkel. Engineering technology design, Trinity Musininsky, Robert Carvaz, Jack Tees. Power equipment technology, Brett Poller. Second place finish, Silver Division. Power equipment technology, Devin Keller. Third place bronze, 3D visualization and animation, Matthew Brozovich, Michael Stodstil. Automotive service technology, Ryan Crestle. Automotive maintenance and light repair, Dominic Tucci. Whereas 50 Lockport Township High School Skills USA Students compete in the Skills USA State Competition on April 28, 2023, at the Civic Center in Peoria, Illinois. And whereas Coach Matt Mullins, Mark Delevega, Jeff Brown, and Chris Davis have aided and guided the members of Lockport Skills USA Team and their successes. And whereas the students have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 15th day of May 2023. And at this time, I'd like to invite Trinity and Brett to go ahead and stand the stage, Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School Students Trinity Musininsky and Brett Poller. Whereas Lockport Township High School Skills USA Students Trinity Musininsky and Brett Poller applied for and were voted as the Skills USA Illinois State Officers for the 2023 and 2024 school year, and were the masters of ceremony for this year's state conference. They were responsible for helping put together and present one of the biggest conferences in recent years. And whereas the students have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 15th day of May 2023. Next up, I'd like to invite members of our IDEA Team. Come on down. Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School Students of the Illinois Design Educators Association, IDEA. First place state, Assembly Modeling, Kyle Brown. First place state, Architecture Design Team, Bilau Zini, Robert Carvaz, Chloe Berry. Second place state, 3D CAD Modeling, David Criziac. Third place state, 3D CAD Modeling, Matthew Hansel. Third place state, introductory CAD, Matisse Avizionis. Third place state, Machine CAD, Jed Facherdin. Third place state, Agriculture 3D, Pablo Herrera. Whereas Lockport Township High School Students competed in the Illinois Design Educator Association State Competition on April 23, 2023, at Illinois State University, Normal, Illinois. And whereas Bilau Zini is a three-time state champion, and Robert Carvaz and Chloe Berry are two-time back-to-back state champions. Whereas the students have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, and school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 15th day of May 2023. Next up, our nationally ranked Robotics Team. Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School Robotics Students Claudia Babbel, Victor Kazmarcek, Matt Dillon, Matt Hansel, Eric Zarro, Patricia Jurzik, David Criziac, Edward Lothea, Maximus Newt, Anthony Ochoa, Alex Roberts, Brian Sagan, Kayden Sullivan, Jack Tees, Krista Ojo-Widzki. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Robotics Students competed in the State Championships on May 11, 2023, in Decatur, Illinois, and Milliken University. Team 60441A was awarded the Think Award, awarded for the best software programming and robot autonomous control, which qualified them for the VEX Robotics World Championships. And whereas Team 60441B was also qualified for the VEX Robotics World Championships by their high ranking at the end of the competition. And whereas the Robotics Team competed at the VEX World Championships in Dallas, Texas, showcasing the best high school robotics teams from more than 45 countries. And whereas the students have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, and schools, and communities by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 15th day of May 2023. Congratulations. of Personnel, Mr. Tony Candari.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, members of the Board, students, families, and guests. It is always an honor, every May, at the Board of Education meeting, to present to you our retiring staff from Lockport Township High School District 205. All of these staff members have exhibited unparalleled dedication through the years and have given such great service to our students, our families, and the community, and the school. We'll start up this evening honoring four members of our Transportation Department who have retired this year. They're not with us this evening, but I think they're just as important to recognize. Something we say every year is always to remember that the transportation staff are more often than not the first District 205 staff members that students see in the morning and the last one that they see at the end of the day. So they're very, very important people in our district, so I did want to recognize them. First of all, Mr. Bill Lionhood, he served with us for 10 years as a bus driver. Mr. Michael Borkowski served for 12 years. Mr. Stanley Pietrowski served for 22 years as a bus driver. And also, Mr. Fred Jones. And no, I don't think many people in this room know who Fred Jones is, but Mr. Jones was with us for 44 years. And what Mr. Jones did was he worked the second shift from about 4:00 in the afternoon through till midnight, making sure that the buses were clean, making sure that they were operational, and making sure that our driver's ed cars were clean and ready to go. So can we have a big round of applause for all of those transportation staff? Also, in January, we bid farewell to a longtime facilities member, Mr. Bill Fromling. Bill worked in our Facilities Department for 22 years, both here at East Campus and over at Central Campus as well. Again, congratulations to Mr. Fromling on his retirement. Round of applause for that. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Don McHillup to the stage. Don, come on up. Mr. McHillup has spent his entire life in school. I know that sounds funny, but he is finishing his 42nd year as a teacher and his 18th year at Lockport Township High School. He's taught PE and driver's ed. Many of the students here have had Mr. McHillup in class. He's also coached football, he's coached track, and he's coached cross-country. He served as the Regional Director and the President of the, and I'm going to butcher this, the Illinois High School Driver's Education Association. Good, I got it. He also spent his free time, and I say free time because he's always doing things, as an official for the IHSA for track, for cross-country, for volleyball, and for wrestling. He shares that in addition to, of course, all of the students he's come to know and appreciate, he's enjoyed putting together the triathlon, which takes place tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. So he's been an integral part of putting that together. He's enjoyed spending so much time with the staff who have really bonded together and his PE group, specifically Mr. Lewandowski, Mr. Jaquinsky, Ms. Valsich, Ms. Provd, Mr. Lindley, Mr. Kravitz. It's just so many teachers that he's come to appreciate. So he is looking forward to figuring out what retirement means, but he says he has, you know, six Saturdays and a Sunday every week to figure it out. So I think that's fantastic. So please, join me in recognizing Mr. Don McHillup who is here. Okay, he's going to stay up here until we get the next person. Come on up. This time, I'm going to ask Mr. George Chart to please come on up, Coach. So Coach Chart has been a teacher and a coach for 36 years, 17 years here at Lockport Township High School in total. He's taught PE, driver's ed, math, and he's coached football, and he's coached basketball. He shares that, you know, his fondest memories here at LTHS, and I think you'll hear this a lot from the teachers, includes the time that he spent with the students and his fellow teachers. They always bring a smile to his face, and I always see Mr. Chart smiling. So in retirement from teaching, he's looking forward to renovating his homes. He has one here, and then he has a lake home. And also spending time with family members, especially the ones who are going to golf with him. So I think that's awesome. So please join me in recognizing Mr. Chart who is here in service. Anybody here with you tonight, Mr. Chart? Any family members with you here tonight? Mr. Chart's boss and then the guy. Next, I'd really like you to give a round of applause to Ms. Lori Maddox. Lori, come on up. Now, Ms. Maddox has been a school social worker for 40 years, 36 years here at Lockport Township High School. She shares that her fondest memories here at LTHS include being able to say, oh yeah, I had their parents when they were here, too. So 36 years, that's been a while. In retirement from teaching, she's looking forward to taking a vacation that's not linked to the school calendar, right? That'd be good. And she's going to be practicing social work privately when she's finished and possibly becoming a foster parent again. So God bless. Please join me in recognizing this awesome, special person, Ms. Lori Maddox.
My mother, my sister, and all of my children.
Next, I would like you to please welcome Mr. Dave Lorkewitz to please come on up to Mr. Lorkewitz is finishing up his 34th and final year as a teacher and his 30th year here at Lockport Township High School. He has been a math teacher, he's been the math team coach, and he's been He has been a math teacher, he's been the math team coach, and he's been the yearbook sponsor, I think, for 29 years.
Yep.
29 years he's been putting our yearbooks together, so. He lists that one of his fond memories was back when former Principal Bob Meter would have homecoming assemblies, so he remembers that. Of course, all his wonderful students and colleagues that he's met over the years, and going to state playoffs in Peoria when he was a basketball coach.
Just went.
Oh, he just went. Sorry, he wasn't coaching. He just went, so that's good. On a personal note, I've known Mr. Lorikowitz for many, many years, as his children were my students many years ago, so I've known Dave for a long time. He's looking forward to moving south to Alabama, where it's nice and warm, traveling especially to visit his children, I believe in Colorado?
California.
California.
Texas.
And Texas, California and Texas. And taking up the hobby of, and I thought this was really interesting, astrophotography and nature photography. I think that's really cool. Please join me in recognizing Mr. Dave Lorikowitz. And right now, please welcome Ms. Sonia Jackson. Now, Ms. Jackson has been one of the anchors here in the Science Department and among the staff here at Lockport Township High School for 30 years, 33 overall years in education. Ms. Jackson has taught honors chemistry, astronomy, and environmental science. Astronomy, you guys should be talking about, but he should be taking pictures. I thought of that. I personally have had the honor of working with Ms. Jackson on several committees and in many, many capacities here at LTHS, and I'm definitely going to miss her smile and her laugh. That's for me. And her occasional, "Are you serious?" Doesn't she, if you've ever had her in class or been, "Are you serious?" That's a Ms. Jackson ism. She remembers playing in the one and only faculty versus student powder puff game. And it was a pouring rainstorm, if I remember correctly, and it was raining, and there were a lot of bumps, bruises, and broken fingers and body parts by the staff, so I don't know who won that game, though.
It was a draw.
Oh, it was a draw. They called it a draw, okay. In retirement from teaching, Ms. Jackson is looking forward to, of course, doing a lot of traveling and seeing the world. So some of her upcoming trips in Texas, she's going down to June to watch the National Track and Field Championships. In July, she's traveling to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands. In September, she'll be doing a tour of the U.S. National Parks. And then in October, she's going to Italy, so please join me in recognizing my friend. And of course, this night would not be complete unless we brought up everyone's friend, Ms. Trish Sermon. Come on up. Now, most people here tonight know Mrs. Sermon as the Central Campus Assistant Principal, where she's been Assistant Principal for 12 years. She's also been a Family and Consumer Sciences teacher and a dean for a total of over 25 years in education. You were a preschool teacher at one time too, weren't you? Preschool teacher. She has so many wonderful memories of her time here at Lockport, building homecoming floats with Don McAllister, putting in many hours, the Fright Fests at Central Campus, working closely with Mrs. Turner, and believe you me, the two of them together, it's always take them off the speaker when you're talking to them on the phone, that's all I'm saying. She said that all the wonderful students and people here have made her 23 years here in the district fly by. In her retirement, she's going to live what she calls her Friday Office?
Yep.
Friday Office, enjoying the moments and seizing the days. She's looking forward to being the best wife to Mike, her husband, and her three children and her grandchildren. She'll be heading down to Florida, so we wish her good luck, and the Floridians, of course, good luck. They don't know what they're getting. Please join me in recognizing Trish Sermon.
My husband Marty played on the Rock City some years ago, and my son Nick, and my son Craig, my daughter-in-law, Orna, and my grandchildren, Clay and Kason.
To the Board of Education, thank you very much for allowing me this time to recognize our retirees, the Class of 2023. One more, please.
Thank you. I just need a motion to accept the resolutions as presented. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Mr. Navarro. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you so much for everyone. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to all the students and to the retirees. Thank you so much for all your years of service. They were all leaving, so.
So the first thing we wanted to talk about was prom, since that was very recent. Obviously, it was fun getting ready and like getting ready for the actual dance while also the week leading up to it because we had activities every day in the cafeteria. So that was really fun to look forward to. For the actual dance, the having it at the museum was really cool because there's a lot of exhibits we got to see. And I know a lot of us haven't been there since like elementary school field trips, so it was nice to go back there. And pictures in there turned out really pretty. And there was plenty of food, and the food was really good, too. I think it would have been a little bit more fun if there was a few more exhibits open because there wasn't many. So a lot of people did end up leaving about like 9:30 when the dance ended at 11:00. But other than that, it was a really good night and really good atmosphere. So, thank you. We really liked having prom there.
Next event we had was about a week and a half ago. We had our senior dinner dance at the Jacob Henry Mansion. Venue was very nice, and they served salad, chicken, a chicken, rice, and broccoli dish, and then pudding. It was a really good experience, and I thought the dancing atmosphere was a little bit more fun than prom because it was a little more low-key and less people there, but it was a great time. And the photo booth was a huge hit, so.
Yeah, definitely.
And first off, I'd like to congratulate and welcome our two new members of the District 205 School Board. And we'd like to thank you guys for having us these past couple of years, and this year especially. We really appreciate it and have a great time speaking here. And then also, we just elected five new members to our school, our student government board for next year. So we're really excited they'll be with you guys next year, and I think they're going to do a great job.
And then another thing we wanted to talk about was AP testing, just from our point of view. AP testing was the past two weeks. They finished up on Friday, and then I'm pretty sure there's a few more makeup tests this week. Personally, I felt very prepared from what my teachers had for us throughout the year. They did a really good job at planning practice tests and review assignments for us to do. So I felt very confident going into my AP test. I know there were a few complaints about testing areas, specifically having AP tests in the gym as opposed to having them in the port. So I think that definitely for next year, maybe there could be a few changes there just because it was a little bit louder in there than it would have been in a smaller area. But other than that, I thought they went smoothly to you guys.
Yeah, they did. I agree. Lastly, just wanted to fill you guys in. Since us seniors have six days left of school, one event we're doing this Friday is we're having a senior sunrise out on the football field where every senior will come and wear their college gear, take pictures and whatnot, and lead up for the last full day of school before finals start next Monday.
Yeah, and then it's crazy to think that graduation is just a couple of days away. We're all kind of looking forward to it. I'm sure these, and it has been this last month, and these next couple of weeks will be full of bittersweet moments, but we're really, we're really looking forward to it and everything that's going on this upcoming week.
Were there any other questions?
No, you're all seniors.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Our entire government, uh, student government's going. They're leaving.
This is your sign-off. You know?
We're losing all of them.
Thank you, guys, very much. Good job. Thank you.
Congrats.
AFT report, Ms. Fishman.
First of all, I wanted to welcome our newest members officially, so welcome. Looking forward to working with you guys. After the beginning of this meeting, it is a great day to be a porter. First, want to thank everyone who had a part in our Teacher Appreciation Week. We did feel the love, but teachers can't do it alone. If it wasn't for the nurses, the secretaries, the support staff, and the maintenance, we wouldn't be able to do our jobs. So thank you to everyone. Congrats to the retirees tonight who were honored. One thing that stands out as you hear them get announced is Lockport is not somewhere that you come and leave, you stay and build your career. And I think that speaks a lot for what this district has to offer. Last but not least, many might not know that last Thursday was the official end of COVID-19 pandemic proclamation. And I want to acknowledge this administration and school board. You always, always had our, I can get emotional thinking about it, staff and students' well-being in every decision you made. I never want to live another one of those again, but you guys did it with class, so thank you. So with that, bring on summer. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. In absence of Ms. Luanne Johnson for the IASB report, Dr. McBride, do you have anything?
Yeah, I only really have one thing. It's on behalf of my very fine assistant. We are coming up on III. And you might think, November 17th, 18th, 19th, that's so far away, but objects in the mirror are closer than they appear. June 5th, registration opens up for sessions, for hotels, for all of those kinds of things. And as you know, it's sort of a mad dash. So if you could communicate with Mrs. Maxwell just what your preferences are, what your ideas are, we can absolutely guarantee that we get you into the sessions that you want to get into. We're your servants. We'll guide you through that. We have a few weeks. I mentioned to a few of you individually, we have a nice opportunity. So far, we have 18 applications for student board members. And kind of a friend of the Lockport program, a gentleman named Phil Boyd, who's been here doing leadership training and student training, was invited by the Illinois Association of School Boards to do a day-long workshop on Friday, November 17th. That is for student board members, but also for some board members, because there's so many other sessions, to, to join them. I think it'd be a great opportunity for you to get to know Phil Boyd and the work that he does on school climate and culture. Also, a good opportunity to work with whoever you eventually appoint as student board members in that kind of their workshop. So we, there's a request that we do at least have one adult. I'm happy to serve in that role, but I would really, really encourage you, if you're thinking of being in that workshop, IASB is letting us jump into it early. And so we have a reservation already. I just need to know who would like to attend. So you can work that business a little later on, think about it. We'll be asking you if you would like to make that pre-reservation.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have foundation report. Ms. Angela, you know.
Hi, good evening. So it is May in education, which is always a busy time, and the foundation is no exception. We're getting ready for our awards night this coming Wednesday, where in total, there will be 99 individual awards handed out. The foundation themselves, I did come with a number this time since I was asked last year, we'll be giving, we, we are responsible for $82,000 of the awards that are granted that evening. So we're excited to be able to hand out that kind of support to our students in our community. We're grateful to all of the amazing partnerships we've been able to create this year. We've added, it's almost $20,000 to the awards night from last year. So I'm really pleased about all the work that the foundation board has been able to do this year and excited to see how much more we can do next year. In keeping with our theme of trying to bring the community into the fold of what we're doing, we've got two movie nights this summer. Encanto will be played at Porter Stadium on the 7th. And then we figured it's Porter Stadium, so we'll do Ferris Bueller's Day Off on the 21st of June. It's free to the public to attend. We invited some local ice cream trucks and shaved ice to come. People can purchase it, they don't have to. So we're just excited to offer some, some nice community events in the summer with our, with our, you know, in our, on our campus. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that the Taste of Lockport planning is well underway. We have a committee of eight people that are working on that. They met today. They're going to meet throughout the summer, and we're super excited to kind of see what more we can do with the Taste of Lockport in our community. Last year, we were able to, to raise a significant amount of money, and we believe this year we'll be able to, to surpass that and do some, some even more exciting things and see how many more opportunities we can offer our community in our district and in, in our schools. Any questions? Great.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Legislative report?
Legislative report. Things are busy in Springfield. Usually Memorial Day marks, that Friday before Memorial Day oftentimes marks the end of the session. Rarely does the session end. It goes into the next weekend, and there's a mad dash to move things out of committee, get things to the floor. And so there's a number of things that we're, we're really paying attention to. Some of these are moving forward. House Bill 2789 has been approved by the House where it originated and by the Senate is now on the governor's desk. This is interesting in that it is basically that state funding will not be awarded to public libraries, public school libraries that remove books from circulation, that do not adopt the American Library Association's and do not adopt the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights. Your policy is already aligned to the American Association's Library Bill of Rights, but it blocks funding if books that are previously acquired through board adopted procedures are removed from circulation. So that is expected. Our folks in Springfield, High School District Organization of Illinois, and Scope are telling that that will be signed by the governor. We're also really taking a look, I just talked to the superintendent colleague whose school district SB 990 originated from, and I would really encourage members of the board to take note of this. This is significant. There's been a House amendment added to it, but in essence, this is the bill that if school districts have property that they would like to sell, they first have to give the right of first refusal to municipal governments, such as village governments, city governments, park districts, and that would be at the estimated value of the property, not the market value of the property. So any property that you would own, you'd have to offer it right of first refusal to a village or municipality that relies in, resides in, and that is the appraised value, not the market value. As most of you know, if you're property owning the appraised value, might not be the market value, what people are willing to pay for it. So we're concerned about that. There's nothing that if a park district exercises, that this passed the park district, exercise that option, a village, a city, there's nothing in the legislation that would not allow those entities to turn around and then sell the property at market value. So it's a distinct disadvantage to, to school districts. Senate Bill 90 was, was previously called Racism-Free Schools. It's tightened up. There's been a second reading in the Senate this week, more to harassment, really getting at a variety of different types of harassment that can, can occur in schools along racial lines. So they've tightened up what they mean by that. We weren't sure what they meant. Teacher resignation, there's an amendment that clarifies this bill for tenure to non-tenure. It, it clarifies, you might not know this, if a teacher resigns within, inside of 30 days before the start of school, school boards can act to have that teacher's license held. More and more school districts have gotten very serious about this. And what that does for Mr. Kandari is it blocks another school district from moving forward that person's hiring. There are actually fines behind this as well. So it, it acts on that, establishes a timeline, a rigorous timeline for the state superintendent to decide action, because in a few areas, someone's resigned within 10, 15, 20 days of the start of school. They've gone off to another district, that license hasn't been held, that district has hired them, they're well into a semester when the state rules that they should not have taken that position. And it's, it's hard to undo all of that. Teacher tenure, this bill is moving forward as well. This shortens the length of time for a probationary teacher to earn tenure. Presently, it's four years. This bill would create circumstances where it's two years or it's three years. And then the rest of these bills, one I just want to highlight remedial data, you might notice on our school report card that we report remedial coursework that our students are doing in our local community college. But there's no expectation, in this case from Joliet Junior College, to give us information about why did they place students in those remedial courses. That's a choice they make, not a choice that we make. And so the remedial data would require our community colleges to report why did they make that decision? Why did they put a person in remedial math class even though they took four, you know, courses in math, sometimes getting to the pre-calculus or calculus level? What, what is the decision-making process at the junior college? Bullying, this clarifies and intensifies our responsibilities to prevent bullying, and it's now passed both houses. It's weighing the governor's signature, creates a model bullying policy. New assessments, this is some oversight, it's primarily elementary. If any new state assessments are proposed, how is feedback if, from districts, so that we can understand what vendors are selling those assessments, why would they be used in, in schools? SB 1994, you've seen already. This is reserves and annual expenditures. It seems like it's going to move out of the house, but basically what this would do, the key piece with this is that if there are reserves that exceed 2.5 the annual expenditure, think of this in a, in a, in a simple way for us because we have a balanced budget. If you take 2.5 times our annual budget, if we had that much in reserve, which is a little hard for Mrs. Corey and I to imagine that we would ever have that much in, in reserve, the district would have to develop a plan that publishes to the community to, to bring that down. It's a tremendous amount of money to have in reserve. And then finally, the final, SB 1351, you just saw our retirees presently, if you're retiring. If any of those honorees we had tonight were in a year that they had to be evaluated, we're required by state law to evaluate them and report that to TRS. That waives that responsibility. If you're retiring, you do not have to be evaluated in your final year. Any questions? These are not all the education bills, it's the ones that we're really following.
Thank you. Great, public comment follow-up?
Yeah, I want to follow up. This is April 17th. We had a very passionate, you might remember, board member that I spoke with afterwards. Then I had a conversation with Angel Sheik that I want to follow up on as well about the opioid crisis, which we saw the intensity of. I was highly involved as a high school principal in the opioid crisis in the wake of the Great Recession, 2009, 10, 11, and into 12. Primarily in that, those years, we did see high school youth very involved in the use primarily of, of. Fast forward 10 years, we're seeing really 20 to 25-year-olds are, are being impacted. And the speaker, you might remember last month, really encouraged us to come to an event that featured Terry Lemming, a full discussion of how law enforcement, social agencies are dealing with that. I had an opportunity to share with her that the board, we've trained under Dr. Huntington's leadership, over 100 people in the use of Narcan. We've got Narcan dispersed, our buses, various points, not just in our nurse's office, not just with our school resource officers. We've done that education piece. But I also had, we had a great conversation about an individual who is a Lockport, you know, homegrown feature, who students went through here, who does some amazing professional development for parents and for students. I think particularly powerful is a, something, a hidden in plain sight trailer that really depicts something that I think every parent should know of how oftentimes if students are using opioids, they can be hidden literally in plain sight. Reminds me of a family I worked with whose daughter died of addiction, and really, parents had no idea that that daughter was using right in their home. So it really is something we talked about. I was really glad that Angel Sheik gave me a call, and something I'd like to look at as we do our guidance services next fall. So that is April 17th, very serious. Let me jump right into May 10. Only comment we had for May 10th was Tammy Hayes, who kind of asked the board to, and I, and I didn't know Tammy, if you wanted to call back, it was a thank you and a prioritization. So I thought it was a, you know, nice thank you for board service and congratulations, and then also putting, you know, students at the top of, of the things that you do.
Moving on to public comments. All right, at each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. The first one we have is Ms. Trish Tabor.
And.
Tammy, you're going to hand out just some information, so I might not have time to read everything that I have to say.
Do you want me to do the timing? Particularly the vice president tells us.
Thank you. Good. Good evening, board. I want to start off by thanking LTHS for hosting the college night back in April. It was filled with a lot of great information and hopeful that, and I'm hopeful that next year, if you host the same event, that there will be more parents/students in attendance. Even if a student is unsure of going to college, it's still a great, great way to get information, especially with getting information about earning actual college credit while still in high school. The only thing that I may add for next year is having people from the trades or having military recruiters at next year's college information event, and maybe calling it a future planning event, because not all students want to go down the college route or cannot because of the insane cost of college these days. And that's 100% okay, okay, too. Any advantage all of our kids have in getting a hot start or, or step up and having a successful future is always a great thing. There aren't too many other high schools or any other, or any at all for that matter in our area that are offering these kinds of classes to their students. I will totally be an advocate for this event, and it will help in spreading the word. So for that, I want to thank LTHS for these kinds of opportunities. Now that I thanked you for some of the good stuff that LTHS has to offer, there are other things that I think the board needs to take into consideration and be made aware of. Maybe some of you are already aware, and if that's the case, this makes my next subject even more disturbing. In the community, there are concerned parents and community members that have issues with some of the reading material that is being offered to our students at LTHS. I want to clarify first and foremost that I am not a book banner. I just believe that just like video games and going to an R-rated movie, that a parent needs to be made aware of what their children may have access to. The arguments from the opposing side can say, well, they could just look it up on their phones. True, but there's also features on phones that can be locked, and you can ban your kids from seeing that stuff. Same with the TV. I just got a free sample of Disney Plus. I can certainly block that MA footage on my TV so my 16-year-old cannot watch it. The same should be done for books. Books like Tilt, Jack of Hearts, and Other Parts, which I gave you guys an example. In the book, I am choking between my mom's legs. Uh-huh, uh-huh. She is smelling big woman smell. She say suck it, lick me. Her hand like a mountain pushing my head down. Felt her mother's hand between her thighs. Felt her mother's fingers new by the smell of the room. Her mother's hands was now between her own legs. Knowing a man could put his D in you, Gus White stuff in your booty, you could get pregnant. I'm 12 now. I've been knowing about that since I was five or six. Always known about P and D. I was raped by my father and beat. Mama pushed me down in her. That's just one book. That is in LTHS Media Library. Then there's another book, Push. Oh, that, sorry, that was from Push. This is from Jack of Hearts. I don't know, but Jack was like orchestrating the whole thing. He told he seduced them all in there and started the forgery. What did Tori do? What? When she walked in on them, oh, I don't know. I just, gosh, she just closed the door. I would have watched. No, you wouldn't have. Ava, you wouldn't? I would. They laugh. I wonder how he does it? Who? Jack, how he gets all that D, a forgery and handle Ling's pot tub. It's like his life is a porno. Is it like that for all gay guys? Like when he got effed by the coach from Hybrook in the locker room during the homecoming game? This is material and books that you guys have available to your students. These books are readily accessible to our children on the LTHS media app, and parents aren't there to look into these books to see if they're appropriate or not for that particular child. Something has to change. I feel as though, and this is my own personal opinion, that LTHS is only interested in protecting certain groups of our students. What about the students that may have been sexually assaulted, or who have may been, or who is being sexually abused at home? Where is the protection for those students? Because I can tell you right now that some of those books are a trigger for those students. Push was a trigger for me. After, after 19 years of myself being a rape survivor, books like this will forever trigger me. No warnings on the cover or on the back of the book, at least something to warn me about what I was going to pick up and I, and read, and I am a 41-year-old adult. By having these books available, by having these books available, you are all supporting this type of book and this bio material to minors. On one side, LTHS is stepping it up when it comes to the mental health aspect of your students, but on the other hand, it's a complete contradiction when you actually aren't helping them matter when having books such as Push available to those groups of students. I have some ideas of how, what you can do without getting, taking the books off the shelves. If the board is interested, you can reach out to me with those ideas, but at this point, you might as well just offer Playboy and Hustler in the library, too.
Mr. Eric Bonneke.
Hello to the board, and congratulations to our newly-elected and re-elected board members. My name is Eric Bonneke, and I am here tonight to talk about the serious issue of censorship and book banning in the students of LTHS. Today, I was sitting at lunch relaxing with my friends, and from another table of students, I heard them discussing their.
members. My name is Eric Bonneke, and I am here tonight to talk about the serious issue of censorship and book banning in the students of LTHS. Today, I was sitting at lunch relaxing with my friends, and from another table of students, I heard them discussing their concerns about tonight's board meeting. They were hearing rumors about people showing up to speak about banning some of the books in our library. I need to know, I needed to, I knew that I needed to do or say something, so here I am. Now, I know some of you may say, we don't want to ban books, but you do. You want books that don't align with your opinions or values removed from our library and other public libraries. The very definition of ban is to officially or legally prohibit or officially exclude someone or something from a place. When I think of school, I don't think about and care about learning and seeing my friends. Now I have to worry about valuable resources like books disappearing from their shelves. We learn the basics. We learn reading, writing, arithmetic. We also learn about ourselves and our friends, how we are the same and how we are different. Our library and the literature contained within it far exceeds the information any teacher could possibly have time to teach us. I'm asking those of you who want to censor and ban books, why do you want to keep information from us? Why do you think it's a good idea to censor us from information we will need out in the world beyond these walls? Why do you think your opinions are more important than my education and the education of all my classmates? Many, if not all, of the book banners are looking to have, many, many, if not of all the books, book banners are looking to have excluded from our library, are LGBTQ-centered and/or are related to diversity or show some sort of the ugly side of American history. Do you know non-white children attend LTHS? Do you know that gay people and trans people attend LTHS? Is there a reason those in favor of banning particular books don't want the many faces of LTHS represented in their library? People have choices. You have a choice to live your life the way you want outside of the public school system. You don't want to read a book about, you don't want to read a book about a family that doesn't look like yours or about boys kissing boys, then don't. You don't have to, and neither do your children. Just because a particular topic doesn't serve you, doesn't mean it doesn't serve someone else. By taking away resources and representation a student may need, you are seriously putting lives at risk. Now, please stop disrupting our school with A's with your politics. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Have a good night.
Ms. Tammy Hayes? I'm sorry.
Hello. As many of you know, I'm Tammy Hayes. I've been here many, many times. I actually was here back in September, I believe, was that board meeting, and I was discussing the books that were on the curriculum list. And at that time, I discussed trigger words, situations that were in the, in the curriculum books that we were giving the kids to read. And I ended my talk then about, I just don't understand why most of the books that we offer the kids for curriculum, for writing, for English, have to center around violence, drugs, sexual assault, and basic depressing ideas. So here we are again. It's time to talk about books again. And I'm, I'm gonna, yeah, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give a kid props for talking. I'm going to say something else, though. The thing about the library books is this, is that when you have books where the pictures get taken off of Facebook within 48 hours because they go against the standards of Facebook, there's an issue. It's not written. You don't have to read it. It's clear cartoon drawings of oral sex. Is that what we want to make available to 14-year-olds, 15-year-olds? You have to remember that half of this student body, most likely, now statistically, it might not be exactly half, but most likely 50% of this student body is under the age of consent when it comes to sex. The federal law does not allow for you to share sexually explicit information with anyone under the age of 16. So if you can federally get arrested for doing it in your own home, what does that say about our school? You don't have to ban the books. You don't have to get rid of them. But it's the digital age. Make those books flaggable so that you have to get parental permission if you are under the age of 18 years old. Book banning is not where it is. You can keep yelling those words from the mountaintops and try to scare people off. That's not what it is. And if you want to ban books, or you're afraid of people who want to ban books that talk explicitly about how to do things, there's, I've got several examples here. I even have examples on the Amazon website where they couldn't publish what was in the book because Amazon won't publish the review because of the content of the wordage, which is in the book. So we have to understand, there are many facets to this, and we have to also understand, we're working with children here. I guarantee that not more than 20% of your population of children is 18 years or older. Now, the last thing I want to say is regarding one of the books, it's called Lucky, and this is the woman who wrote it, Alice. And I, it's in the nonfiction section, and I personally think it needs to be flagged as fiction because this book chronicles her horrific rape as an 18-year-old college student, where then she identified her attacker six months later and goes through the entire trial process. The only reason why this book should be flagged as nonfiction is because it took a film producer to start really looking at what she wrote and interviewing the man who spent 16 years in prison for the rape of her, and he was innocent the entire time. And it wasn't until a film producer looked into it that he got, he got his sentence excused. But he had to register as a sex offender that entire time. Now, same woman, Alice Shabold, she also has a book called All the Lovely Bones or The Lovely Bones, which is also in our library. And we've discussed this book here before. And that book is about the graphic, very detailed rape of, and murder of a 14-year-old girl. It appears to me as though Alice has a certain genre that she would like to write about, which is completely within her American rights. But these books should have some sort of rating on them. They should have some kind of parental guidance. Not everybody wants their kid reading about how to give the perfect oral sex job. And that's what it is. So we need to step up and put the students first. Their safety is of our most important responsibilities. And yes, sometimes books are not safe, and they need parental and administration to look into this stuff. We can't just, these are, these are the books that are here for entertainment. This, yeah, that's fine. It's not curriculum. I understand that. These are not curriculum books. These are entertainment books. And yes, they can get it on the internet. They can get it at the secondhand bookstore. But why do we also have to make it available here at LTHS? We don't. That's the answer. We don't. So please, put this on your next agenda to discuss these books. Please. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Ms. Reagan Hayes.
Hello. I'm actually here to talk about prom, which was almost a month ago and was very unfortunately, very underwhelming. I did not have a good time at prom, and I know a lot of other people that also did not have a good time at prom, partly because of the ticket price. $135 is a lot for a high school student, and a lot of people's parents pay it, but it's still a lot of money. And especially for no way to get down or home from downtown Chicago. It's a long drive, and quite honestly, Chicago's a dangerous town. I don't feel safe in Chicago. I know a lot of other people that don't feel safe in Chicago. The weekend of prom, 36 people were shot in Chicago. 31 were sent to the hospital, then were wounded. Five people died the weekend that I was downtown Chicago. Two of those people were a couple that were sitting in their car and met, two men on foot, walked up, opened fire on their car, and killed the man driving. That easily could have been LTHS students. And for a school that preaches safety and safety concerns, it's troubling that this administration feels safe sending students and kids to a place where people get murdered every day. Chicago's not safe. And to leave students stranded in Chicago with no way to get home is not, it's irresponsible, and it makes a lot of students very uncomfortable. I personally spent over $500 on prom for one night. Now, yes, I could have gotten a cheaper dress, but to get down there, my parents did not want me driving down there. I did not want to drive in Chicago. Like I said, two people got shot in their car in Chicago. And it was just a very, very expensive night, especially for the fact that there was pretty much the equivalent of one museum exhibit open. That personally was not enough to justify the price for me. But more so just talking about, it's really, it's dangerous in Chicago, and I don't think that prom should be in Chicago anymore. We're in the center of a lot of great event centers. There's the Chateau in Orland. Great. Denofol Banquets is also a lovely hall. There are a lot of places that prom could be done where the safety of people doesn't have to be compromised. I know Lamont, their prom is only $60, and they do it at a banquet hall. And I think that setting prom somewhere like a banquet hall would also set the precedent for expectations. I know a lot of people were disappointed in prom because there weren't enough exhibits open to justify having it at a museum. When you have it at somewhere like a banquet hall, people kind of adjust their expectations to the venue. So they don't really expect, you know, this extravagant thing. They expect a food and a dance floor. But with the Science and Industry Museum, it was really disappointing to find that there was a mirror maze and then half of the weather exhibit open. That was all that was open. Originally, the Extreme Ice Exhibit was open, but about an hour or two into the dance, everybody got ushered out of the Extreme Ice Exhibit by an LTHS administrator for some reason. I'm not really sure why. And people got kicked out of the second floor of the weather exhibit. So I think that a lot of people were just really let down by prom and were further upset by how much money they spent on prom and the fact that they expected a lot more. So I think that prom is just something that needs to maybe be adjusted a little bit for student's safety, for their financial reasons, and further just general happiness. I think that a lot of people would have a way better time at prom if they didn't spend so much money, have to go so far, and just get disappointed by what actually ends up happening that night. Like student government said, a lot of people left early. And I know a lot of people that wanted to leave early but couldn't because their cars were scheduled to pick them up at 11:00. So even the people that were still there, many of them did not want to be there anymore. So I think that prom is just something that needs to be talked about again and maybe get some student input about where students would like to have prom. And I think that that would make it a way better experience and a much better send-off for every year of seniors. Thank you.
Ms. Jody Benson.
Hello. Sorry. Hi. My name is Jody Benson, We the Parents Illinois. I was so inspired by some of the reading earlier. I thought I would just read a few more sentences that are just so fantastic in some of these books that are in your packet. Let's see here. So he bends me over the bed and dribbles, dribbles some lube on my ass. I made him wear a condom, of course, and he shoves it in. Wow, it hurt. I tell him to stay. It hurts. And he says, he'll go a little slower for me. Eventually, he finishes and pulls out, and the condom was covered in shit. Yeah, that just happened. I don't envy the position that you guys are in. On one hand, you made a promise to protect the children of this school and of this community. And on the other hand, censorship and book banning is wrong. We agree. Book banning is censorship. It's the removal of books from libraries because someone objects to their themes or content. Book auditing, which is a little different, validates the age appropriateness of a book, and the result is not the removal of the book, but a parental guidance being labeled or assigned to it. So parents are aware that it may contain advanced information. And before teachers assign it to students for their summer reading, they are aware that it contains inappropriate content. The parents can determine at that point if the information is appropriate for their child. The rating system has existed in movies since the 1980s. If any of these books were a movie, they'd be rated R. But since there is no rating system for literature, they're allowed. Advocating for age-appropriate content in schools is not banning. It is responsible parenting. And there are solutions that don't involve removing any one book from a library. They want you to believe that the benefit of these books outweighs the risk, so they intentionally package their porn with a powerful theme or that encapsulates a specific audience. Oh, you suffer from anxiety? Here's a book on how to cope with anxiety with a side of porn. I wish we could bring back the old-school family video concept and hide porn behind a black curtain, but that's not realistic. So what is the solution? Why not create your own parental guidance system here at Lockport, where you simply flag these inappropriate books with a label? And when a student checks out a book with that label, the librarian sends an automated message to the parent, letting them know that the student checked out a book that contains adult situations. And I'm being polite when I call them adult situations. You would like the, you would literally make the evening news as the first and only high school in Illinois to come up with a system that actually works. All I'm suggesting is this. Have us parents choose a parent advocate and open the lines of communication by meeting with us to find sensible solutions. Thank you.
Next, I have Ms. Suzie Spratt.
Hi, I'm Suzie Spratt, and I just want to say that it is un-American to restrict books. Books should be accessible to all interested. Let those people draw their own conclusions who choose to read them and make well-rounded decisions based on all the information, not just some information available. No one has to read a book with information that is uncomfortable. It is a choice. I do not want someone else to make these decisions for me or for anyone else. If we raise our children well, they will have a good foundation to make these decisions and choose what to read or not to read, to put down a book that's uncomfortable, as well as they can find anything and more on the internet, as everyone knows. By removing books, it just makes more people curious and want to find out more about them, and they will find, the children will find a way to read them. Thank you.
Ms. Janet Decker. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that right. Ms. Janet.
Hope you pronounced your last name right.
Decker.
Decker, sorry.
Okay. Sorry. That's okay. No one ever pronounces it correctly. So good evening. My name is Janet Decker, and I've been a Homer resident since 1990. I'm a retired reading specialist with a master's in reading and a master's in special ed and a trained reading recovery teacher. I'm also a former employee of the Homer Township Library. It saddens me greatly to hear that books are being targeted for banning. I have to ask the question, what is so offensive in this book that someone thinks no one should read it? That's what banning books means. Someone I don't know is making the decision for everyone else not to read a book. In the words of George Carlin, don't just teach your children to read, teach them to question what they read. The value of an education is not the learning of many facts, but training the mind to think. Thank you. Thank you. That is it.
Is there anybody, is there anybody that signed up that we missed? I just want to make sure.
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Okay.
Yes. All right, moving on to our notices of communications. I note that in your board packet, you did say that we had no communications, but we do have one that was just given to me.
We just received a card from the Lockport Robotics Club. They had said, Dear LTHS Board of Education, thank you for supporting our LTHS Robotics Club this year, especially our trip to Dallas for the Vex Robotics World Championship. We had an amazing time and could not have done this without you and your support. Go Porters.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shimon Rogers. Great. And as you can see on your board packet, we had the Freedom of Information request. There were four of them there. Okay, moving on to our approval items. Do I have a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from the May 10, 2023 regular board meeting?
No move.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Dr. Shimon Rogers. I do have one. I believe it's on the Foundation of the Reorganization. I believe you have listed Mr. Navara on the Foundation as a liaison, but I think I, I think they skipped me.
We, I know we decided both of you were going to, so.
Yes.
You can amend to minutes. Is that, it only lists Mr. Navara?
Yes, it, yes.
So you... So you, Mrs. Lopez, you would have to motion have minutes approved with that change.
Okay.
And we just read that into the record.
Okay. All right. Then, again, I'm just going to ask for that motion to approve the open session meeting minutes with those corrections from the May 10, 2023.
Some move.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Dr. Shimon Rogers. All right. Roll call. Shaw?
Yes.
Forsma?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the May 2023 board member expenses? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Sorry, it's been motioned by Ms. Lopez, by Ms. Lopez Caniva, and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to those expenses? All right, roll call. Forsma?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Moving on to our treasurer's report. Croy?
Hi, thank you. President Lopez Caniva? There is a lot of information in the treasurer's report this month. In addition to all of the regular reports, there's a list of things at the bottom about upcoming action. There's a lot going on at the end of the year, in the business office as well as the buildings. But the thing I'd like to highlight, unless the board has any other questions about the other things, what I'd like to highlight is actually the, it's just below the interfund transfer summaries there, Dr. McBride, the five-year financial forecast. This is the month that I prepared a projection, so to speak, of what we might look like with a bunch of assumptions. So the way that a five-year financial projection is created, or at least the way that I create them, is I use a software vendor to prepare the charts and graphs. But there's a bunch of assumptions that go into it, right? There's a lot of things I don't know. I don't know what's going to happen the next two months, let alone what's going to happen over the next five years. So I have to make some assumptions. So the first few slides of this talks about all of the assumptions that go into this projection. Most of those assumptions are based on our history, right? Or other things that we might know or know we're working on. So the first slide talks all about our property tax revenue. So there's a bunch of pieces to property tax calculations, so there's a bunch of assumptions that we have to make in order to figure out what that's going to look like. We know what our 2022 tax extension looks like, so that's in there. The existing EAV, which is the values of all the properties, that, we know the 5% for 2022 because that's what was already computed, and we're estimating 2% thereafter. Because yes, the assumption is that it's not going to stay, that values aren't going to stay increasing forever exponentially, right? And it's more historical that it's a lower percentage increase. It's also a conservative factor, right? If we assume that we're not going to get as much revenue because it's not going to be as much value, then it makes our projections a little more conservative. CPI, we know it's going, it was 25% for, it was over 5% actually, but we were capped at 5% for 2022 tax levy. We're going to be in that same situation in 2023 because December ended above 5%. So we will be capped again when we do, when we start talking about the next levy as well. And then we're assuming, again, that that is going to drop as well because it's not going to stay that way forever. Historically, it has been around 2-point-something as an average. So that's why we use 2 going forward. New EAV, so new EAV, new property, is the growth that we see in our area, right? So we know what 2022 was, that's an actual figure, and we estimate 20 million going forward because there is still room for growth in our community. Our tax collections are split over two years, so the taxes that we levy in December, the board approves them in December, we get, we collection, get collections in the spring, we get collections in the fall. So it's split over two fiscal years for us because our fiscal year end is June 30th. So that's what that next assumption is. It's talking about we're going to collect half of it in the spring, half of it in the fall. And it's going to split the two fiscal years, so that affects the different projections for each fiscal year. Our levy collection percentage is very good, so we have a 99% in there. We do not have any projections in here about new debt being issued. That can all change if we ask the community for any debt in the future, for capital projects, et cetera. But as of right now, there's no assumption in here that we're going to be issuing any debt. What happens annually, and it's part of the budget process, is we estimate what the levy's going to look like, and then we distribute it amongst the funds to balance the funds. So that's what that last statement is about as well. So then the other revenue assumptions are much stabler, right? Much more stable. Corporate personal property replacement tax is one of the other big revenue items, and it's been very high through the pandemic. And the assumption is it's going to drop back down to more historically normal levels. So that is what that's saying there for future years. We're finishing up the ARPS, our money, so through the pandemic, the CAREERS Act granted actually three different groups of funding to the school districts in Illinois. So, well, throughout the country, I guess. We had SRR1, which was spent primarily, that was the immediate rush of funds. That was back in 2020, 2021. Then we had SRR2 that was spent in primarily 2021. And then SRR3 was a bigger chunk, and it was being spent for us over this year and next year. So what's left of the SRR3 funds will be spent next year. So that's in this projection as well, and then that will drop off, and our federal funding will go back to the primary sources that we have, which are idea and title.
Just pausing on this, I mentioned this to the board earlier about many of the economic projections in the public sector for 2024 and 2025, which are projected based on history, you know, if you take a look at the Great Recession after the Great Recession in 2009, 2010, where the private sector had a difficult go. Then the public sector in 2010 and 2011 followed suit. That's typically the trend, something we've been preparing for. So while I think Mrs. Croy and I feel good about, well, personal property, corporate personal property tax reduces, our revenue there isn't so great that that is going to be catastrophic for us. SRR funds ending, we've strategically tried not to take on costs that we would carry beyond that SRR funding. But what many projections are, what about all the other districts and public entities around us? Might not be operating in the same conservative way. Then how does that impact the state? And then how does that impact state funding? And this is what we saw in, right after the Great Recession, that is, credit locked up, has funding and revenue to the state locked up. That's what produced, two years later, a challenging time with, as Mrs. Crowe mentioned, we're expecting inflation also to carry through into next year. So we're really trying to predict what might happen even in a bigger sense than us of what 2024 and 2025 will look like. That's really the basis of this and the basis of our thoughts about levying, to be ready to be insulated, and the goal you set of six to 12 months of cash on hand, so just that prediction. My apologies for interrupting.
No, that's okay. So we're assuming, that's the end of the revenue assumptions. Expenditure assumptions, as Dr. McBride has told the board previously, and I think I have probably mentioned it as well, our biggest expenditures are staff, so salaries and benefits. So the first couple, the next couple of slides here talk about what assumptions we're making. And the bulk of those are related or tied to our collective bargaining agreements, which we are in the middle of, with supports, one is with support staff and one is with licensed staff. So our licensed staff, that's supposed to be a D at the end of that, licensed staff, increases 4% in those future years. The contract that we are in currently with them ends in 2024, so we're just assuming that that's going to stay stable. We're aware of what other districts around us are settling at, and so we're just kind of projecting some stability. There's an unknown there, though, because we will be bargaining next year, so we don't know where that will end up for sure. Administrator and director increases, current year, 4% tied to the collective bargaining agreement, so that there's some stability and some 3% after. Then educational support staff, again, it's also in the middle of a collective bargaining agreement. That's actually a five-year agreement. So FY24 is year three, and the, that agreement has 5% for that year and 4% for the next two years, so we assumed that 4% would stay in the last two of the projection. Part-time rates, we have an increase estimated in here of 3%. That, that is primarily due to minimum wage increasing, so that is kind of tied to that. The increase in licensed staff, I've got three FTE in here, and that's based on some of our previous projections of staff. It's really, the actual number of FTE increases isn't as important as what the projected dollar is going to be, so three times the $55,000 estimated in here. So it could be more or less FTE increases, but the projections including an extra $150,000 plus for new staff. Now, what historically has happened and what is not included in here is any potential savings for a higher-cost staff retiring, being replaced by a newer, lower-cost staff. So the $150,000 plus in here is a little bit conservative because in many years, we can actually make that a wash, right? Even if we're adding a staff member, two, three, four, we have got some history where we've been able to, for minimal increases, add staff because we're adding staff that are newer, right? Like within five, 10 years, as opposed to someone who's been here for 25, 30 years. Because as you move down a salary schedule, you make more money, right? You've been here a long time. Benefits, we know that benefits are increasing 7% next year for health insurance and 10% for dental insurance. Those actual increases are in there in the projection. Health insurance, I'm assuming a continual increase of 5% each year. Dental, I'm not putting an increase in there. Yeah.
Is that normal, a dental insurance increase of 10%?
This is where I was just going to explain, Mr. Navara. Thank you for pointing this out. So it is not, but here's the thing, we're, all of our insurance rates were proposed to be 13%. So we were supposed to have a 13% health insurance increase as well. But our consultant helped us get that down to only 7%. This is, right now, everything is very high. The other piece to this is we're self-insured, okay? So being self-insured, we buffer the rate increases from year to year, so we were absorbing a little bit of that increase in the last few years through the benefit plan. And then all of a sudden, now all the claims have caught up, and we've got to pay 10%. But what's expected is that 10% raising the rates to, up to that 10% level, we shouldn't have significant increases over the next few years then. It kind of stabilizes out. Our pattern for the benefit plan is we'll have one high year, then we'll have a few that are not very high increases. This is our high year. Yeah.
Would drive that, with your permission, Ms. Croy, are our previous claims in the previous year. So for example, coming out of the pandemic, a lot of deferred muscular skeletal, shoulders, hips, knees, very expensive because not only do they involve the surgery, which is expensive, but the rehabilitation. People deferred those, now they caught back up. And so the claims in the past year drive the rates in the future year. We had many claims in the past year, and that, that's what drives the increase in the rate with our insurance.
But is it the average increase of, I don't know the exact numbers, but wasn't health last year like only 3%?
Oh. Our health year increased 5 last year.
Right, last year.
Yeah.
Or was it dental that was that low?
Dental might have been low, but that's because, like Dr. McBride said, dental was deferred as well. Many people through the pandemic.
Also, we took out a new, we took out a brand-new dental provider.
Yeah.
So they didn't have a history of claims with us. Delta Dental now has a full year and some of claims, so they're looking at, their actuaries are predicting, based on our use, here's what they think will happen in the future.
Cool. And our claims, the deferral of claims was exactly what happened through the pandemic for dental as well. People didn't go for their regular cleanings, and then maybe they've got cavities that developed because of it. So, so that, that, we did see some of that as well. I think that was the end of that. Other expenditure assumptions. Purchase services and supplies, while inflation is at 5 or higher, I'm only assuming a 2% increase in purchase services and supplies overall. And here's the reason for that. This is, these are areas that we do get to play around with, right? Like, we can maybe not buy as many supplies in one year. And it allows us some flexibility, but we're still assuming an increase, right? Capital projects. Capital projects is where a lot of big fluctuation is what you're going to see. You're going to see fluctuation in the fund balances, in the spending, in the deficits in some of the years, and the reason you're going to see those is because of large capital things, right? So right now, we've got two capital projects, thus the interfund transfer summary pieces of information in the treasurer's report. We've got a roofing project and the auditorium lighting that's still going to be finishing up this June. Those are actually two projects that we're spending fund balance for. So that means we're going to see a deficit, and we're going to see fund balances decrease for those projects. In the projection, there are a couple, there's at least one other year where you'll see that there's an expectation we'll probably be spending a little more fund balance for maybe a future phase of a, of the roofing project as well. Plans for any significant renovation are not in here. So if the board chose to decide, we're going to try and ask for a referendum, we're going to try and really do a lot of work on Central, we're going to do a lot of work on East because we think we need those things, based on all of the community input we're receiving through all our tours and stuff. Those are not in here, right? Like, there's no estimate of that in here as of right now because there's really no, I have no estimates of what that kind of project would entail at this point. We know, we don't have our arms around that, so. The transfers from the operating, operations and maintenance and capital projects fund that cover the capital projects are also in there. I think that's it on that screen, so. Any questions on all of those assumptions? There's a lot of things that could vary. I mean, they're projections, so you could, we could be off on any of those assumptions, but it's to give us like a baseline of where we're going. And if you want to scroll just a couple more slides, please, Dr. McBride, thank you.
So can I ask why we switched dental providers? Was it just better value?
There are a number of reasons. We mainly switched to Delta Dental to get more benefits and a lower cost.
Okay.
Our previous provider, not, you know, just, we shopped, and we're always shopping on behalf of our members and the board, and we're looking for, you know, high coverage, but at a low cost. And so far, we've been pleased with the switch over to Delta Dental. One of the other things that we look for are administrative charges, just to handle claims, and Delta Dental was far more competitive than our previous health, our previous dental provider.
PPO network, it comes into play as well. Delta Dental has a good PPO network in our area for dentists.
So there's a lot of choice.
Mm-hmm. Choice for our.
So cost, saving money, but also we got more choice for our members.
What does PPO stand for? I know what you're talking about.
Preferred Provider Network.
Okay. The dentists, dentists and providers that are in the network are more inexpensive to the plan.
It's hard learning all these abbreviations.
Yeah.
I just need to be on top of it.
That's good. There's a lot.
I know what it means, but it, you know.
So this first slide here is actually a projection of where we think we'll end up the year for fund balance. So that blue line is the current project, the projected fund balance at the end. It's current through April and then projected for me in June, and then the red is prior. The board will notice that, and public, members of the public, that in June, the balance does go high, but that's because we collect all the property taxes. So we collect all these property taxes that we need to spend over the next six months. And then we collect them again, and then we spend them over the next six months again. So that makes our June fund balance kind of look artificially high. And we are a cash basis reporter, so what that means is we report the cash we have. We don't report any liability for that. So there are a number of school districts that report on an accrual basis, and what they would be doing then is not report all that as revenue. They would report it as deferred revenue because we're not intending to spend it when we collect it, we're intending to spend it over the next six months. So it's a little bit of a weird reporting, but.
Right, so that, that is the point, that we'll, that's our only source of income, our only paycheck for the next six months. But built into that, with the board's goal of six to 12 months of cash on hand, we have to meet that goal too in all of our funds. So it's the budget and then that, that board goal. And we drape over two years, so much of that money, as Mrs. Croy said, has been kind of budgeted and spoken for and invested. So it's invested to make that money go to work for us over the next six months.
If you scroll to the next slide, the next slide is the projection. So this is a projection, all of our funds. So there's many, many. So there's many, many slides in here, because there's different ways to show all the data, right? Like, this one is, and it goes from the highest level, kind of the way I prepare the budget book, too, the highest level to more details, right? So as we scroll further back, which I won't go through by fund, but if you want to look at each fund, they're in the back of this projection. Really, this slide and the next slide are probably the only two things that I would like to point out unless the board asks questions, and that's because this is the overall, this is all our funds combined, right? Top line is fiscal year-end balances, and then all of the little multiple-color bars are by fund, okay? The next slide actually shows the numbers behind this graph, and the bottom of it, just like the board sees every month in the Treasurers Report, does show estimated fund balance, number of months cash on hand. So it's right where we planned to be, that's the goal, and so spending and it's really spending is where we have the control, not necessarily the revenue collection, because we're limited. Spending would be to try and maintain those balances, and as I said, in this budget year, next budget year, and then in the future budget year, twenty-twenty-eight, those are years with planned potential spend-down of fund balances, and they're for specifically capital projects. So there are roofing project, an auditorium project between this year and next year, and then a future phase of a roofing project in twenty-twenty-eight. Now, that's not to say that there won't be other capital projects that Mr. Thompson's department will do, these are just the large ones that need to be accounted for separately and that we will probably need to use some fund balances for. Are there any questions on all of that? It's a lot of data, and I've spent a lot of time.
It reminds me, deficits sprinkled throughout this report, but as we mentioned, the board, what we're trying to do is, rather than letting deficits open up, managing through those deficits. You know, we've kind of painted them as a target of something that we have to address, you know, down the future to avoid a consistent pattern of deficit spending that would not lead to a balanced budget. So one way to think about this is that this line is almost a rudder for us, to keep us steady so that we don't have wild declines or wild increases. You know, so that steadiness is really what we're trying to achieve on behalf of the taxpayers and students and staff, community members.
And as the board looks at the projection, assumptions in the near future are better, we're better at predicting a near-future thing than we are a further-out future thing. So twenty-seven and twenty-eight are less reliable than saying, oh, what next year might look like, right? Just because of the nature of, a lot can happen in five years.
You mentioned the roofing project in twenty-twenty-eight. Is that just the end of the lifespan of the of the roof?
Well, we had, so previously, I don't remember when we did this, Mr. Thompson, we had a full roof assessment, and so we've got kind of multiple phases set up to try and replace all of the roof at East. So this project we're doing right now is the first phase of that. So yes, it's end of useful life, and we've kind of set it out over what needs to be done immediately first, and then phase it, so that we're not doing six, ten million all at one time.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and if you have further questions about that, Mr. Thompson addresses a lot of that kind of stuff.
And staging it also, typically, Mr. Borsma, that, like, a major roof project like this would be a referendum item, but staging it so that we can stage it out so that we can work with, basically within our means, to address a four-million-dollar project.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've been able to do this kind of thing previously as well. A few years back, we did parking lot replacements similarly. They were a smaller project than this, but it was still thousands, you know, millions of dollars, where we were splitting it in phases so that we can manage it a little better without having to ask for voter approval or issue any new debt even, so. And then there's a listing of things at the bottom of the Treasury Report, like I said, future action considerations, many of them are going to show up in June, and they're, a lot of them are also routine, there's things that we do every June, so there's information here so that you know what to expect.
Since we have a very late June meeting, June twenty-sixth, we will be talking to you quite a bit about these action considerations. Typical, but just making sure that board members are aware of what they are, where we're going with them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I need a, do I have a motion to approve the April twenty-twenty-three Treasurers Report?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shimon Rogers and second by Mr. Borsma?
Yep.
All right. All right, roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Borsma?
Yes.
Shimon Rogers?
Lopez Crivina?
Yes.
All right, Superintendent, report.
All right, Mr. Matt Dosterhoff is going to be at the table and help us quite a bit with this just before we jump in. Again, many people, Dr. Sanders Shimon Rogers, Mr. Marty Borsma, welcome to the table, and congratulations to Dr. Veronica Shaw on your lock change. Thanks to all of the board members for putting your shoulders into honoring all those people tonight, they deserve it, and as Mrs. Kishline always reminds us, when we see eighty students, there are teachers, coaches, mentors behind them, so it doesn't happen by itself, and so we appreciate them as well. As we've done, this is the sixth time that we've gotten into a board goal, we're going to deal with our technology goal and the goal that our principal steward in June. Before we do that, just just a few things to update the board on. As Mrs. Kroy mentioned earlier, conversations, tours, excursions to explore renovation and the renewal of Central Campus as well as parts of East Campus continue. We have two activities this week. Wednesday morning, eight AM, we're doing another tour of Central, and then on Thursday, a number of people, including citizens from an advisory committee, staff, will be traveling to Lyons Township High School in Downers Grove North High School. There's still room on the bus, if any board members would like to leave at ten fifteen and go with us. I just got to give you an example, something that at our last tour happened, you know, we had a young woman, who, bless you, Mr. Navarro, who, that really spoke to why continuing Central as a school building is so urgent to consider its facilities. We had a young woman come up to the main entrance, and she could not enter the school, the school that she'll be at next year. And the reason why she couldn't enter the school in the main entrance is because she's wheelchair-bound. And the building is in its age, it is minimally ADA compliant, but to make it fully ADA compliant, we would have to do significant work to that school building, and for children to go to that building or for their grandparents to come and use that building at events, it kind of speaks to the, to the need, if we continue with that as a school building. Also, just something I'm working on, a great book called Schools Cannot Do It Alone, talking to a lot of business leaders in the community, and in working, maybe pull together sort of a think-tank of business leaders of just, what kind of graduates are they looking for? We kind of explore college and career. So if any board members, if anyone that you want me to put on that committee, is I kind of form it and work on it. I also really want to give a great shout-out to Dr. Huntington, did an amazing job organizing what's become my favorite event, because I get to plant things and get my hands dirty, seniors will grow. We were out in Fairmont on Saturday morning with rainwater barrels and planting in seniors' yards, beautification, and it's such an amazing, from our students in the CCC and Academy, our construction trade students, our horticulture department, and then just some good old volunteers, it was a great morning. And then finally, I really, the next time these gentlemen are here, I'm almost going to insist that board members should come, but we have a history of Vietnam course, and Mike Zaworski is the teacher of that, does a brilliant job. He has three, usually four, but three were here recently, gentlemen, that were LTHS grads, they graduated in May, they were in Kason in September, and these men just are men. They do such a great job for our students. It's so moving, it's so eloquent, it's so thoughtful, and our students are thoughtful in the questions that they ask them, and I was there last Friday, it's really incredible, and I'll make sure you really, you know, even know more about it, but I think you're, you want to be there, just to hear their experience, you know, in that conflict. Yeah, Mr. Norar?
And this was something during school hours?
It was, mhm.
I thought because of our agreement with the unions, we aren't able to show up without, like, previous notice?
No, you know, just, if you let me know, I, you know, let me know, and then we kind of go up and we, you know, like all the events that we go to during the school day, you know, the protocol we usually use is board members reach out to me, and then, you know, we we go to the event. Mr. Dusterhoff, your board goal?
All right, thank you. So the technology department's goal is to make available current and appropriate technology for resources to students and staff. And so in the next two to three months, we do a lot of our expenditures for the technology department, because we're working over the summer to be prepared for all of next year. And so the the number-one thing from a technology standpoint that we do every year is purchasing new Chromebooks for our incoming freshmen. And every year, we look at the different available models and some of their specifications and make make decisions based on current needs and what we project to be future needs, so that our students have appropriate devices for the full four years, and for many, well, most students use the Chromebooks as their main school work computer, right? They're not going home and using different laptops, they're using their Chromebooks for that. As well as many students, that's their other, that's their primary source of technology in their own home, right? So it may be a cellphone, it may not be, but it, but if they need something with a keyboard and monitor, then that's what they're using is is their Chromebook. So for a number of years now, we've been buying touch panel Chromebooks so that they're interactive, you can read on them a little bit easier, they fold over, that sort of thing. And when we purchased those, I don't remember what year, but when we purchased those for the first time, touch was just getting started, but we knew by the time those freshmen were juniors that that technology would be needed, and if we waited until it's absolutely needed, then your older students are always behind the curve on on that technology. So for this year, for example, we're buying similar-to-devices than what we bought last year, but this year, we're buying them with a little bit more memory in them, RAM, so that in three years, they are as useful as they are today, as we expect the need for more resources in those computers to to be able to handle the technology load. And so that's a very important piece for students to be able to have a good, solid working device over their life here at LT. During any of these, stop me, ask any questions, I am not, easier for me to do it as we're going. Dedicated computer labs. Tonight, you were able to honor the robotics team, Skills USA, which is doing many different pieces, but many of those programs have dedicated computer labs. Those dedicated computer labs are in three- to five-year rotations because of different needs. The CAD lab, for example, is a three-year lab, the music lab, those computers aren't, don't need much intensity, because they are using keyboards and other pieces to actually offload that workload. This year, those three, four, and five-year cycles, a lot have just sort of come together. We're actually replacing six labs this summer, from the CAD lab, the music lab, some stuff, some of the computers for the Porter Store and the entrepreneurial program, the robotics computers, and then computers in Project Lead the Way and the robotics courses at Central Campus as well. So it's a big year for labs, and so we're doing those. Our teachers receive new computers every three years, and so three years, a typical laptop should last three to five years. We do do a lease on technol, we do a lease, and it's the only lease we do in technology for teacher laptops, we do it every three years, and the reason being, teachers rely on it every day to teach. It's, you know, probably their number-one tool, because they're constantly displaying something on their projectors using using those computers. So they have to be in good working order, and unfortunately, with four thousand students in the building, in the buildings, and teachers walking around with them, and just the pure amount of humans interacting with these devices, they take a little bit more wear than, say, somebody who works in an accounting office, that computer sits there all day, maybe it walks down the hall to a meeting versus walking through a crowded hallway with a bunch of students, things get knocked, things get dropped, I mean, things happen to them. People aren't being careless, people aren't being frivolous with them, it's just the nature of why we do it every three years. And then finally, from a hardware sort of expenditure thing, point this year, these boards that you have in front of you, we put them in all of the classrooms at Central Campus last summer, and this summer, we're putting them in all of the classrooms here at East Campus. They are, they replace the projectors that we currently have in all of the classrooms, they are a better viewing experience than a projector, glare, brightness, all of those sorts of things, as well as being interactive, and so you can go up to them and touch them and do a number of things. And so as we implement them and teachers start to use them, again, just as projectors as they do today, they are growing into using them differently as a teaching tool, and they're more reliable in the, there's no bulbs than a number of things with projectors that make them, that make a monitor like this a better solution.
Can I stop you for one second?
Absolutely.
As far as the teacher laptops?
Mhm.
Is that what, that's a three-year lease, right?
Yes.
Okay, so are we going to go over the cost for that later on?
Yes, actually, we're, we're asking you to approve it later in the in the meeting. So I can just briefly talk about it. In there, Mrs. Kroy has the breakdown of previous year's leases, and this year, if you drew a straight line from the first time we did it to this time, it's a fairly straight line. The last time, we got a crazy, ridiculous deal on the laptops that we bought, and we're buying nearly the identical laptops this year, and they're, do you know, there might be three or four hundred dollars more per unit than what?
Yeah, they're like, like fifty percent more than what we got them in two thousand twenty.
Yeah, the, yeah, the twenty-twenty ones were.
Nine eighty-six.
Nine hundred and.
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen, you're right.
Right. But that dropped from two thousand seventeen, they were twelve hundred a unit.
Right. I, it was, it was, we were surprised when we did it, and in fact, this year, when we went to look at what device we wanted to buy, we've been very pleased with the Dells that we have this year, or the last three years, and we got two models that were very close to each other, one was more expensive than the other. We gave them to four different teachers, had them rotate through them, experience them, and those four teachers recommended that we buy the lesser of the two, the less expensive model between the two of them, and the number-one reason was the more expensive model had fewer USB ports, and so they, as they looked at them and used them, they found that the, they wanted the more ports versus whatever slight performance differences. And my staff decided that they were relatively equal, but we wanted teacher input, and that was where we landed.
I guess my question about these was, so we've used this, the vendor, American Capital, since two thousand eleven, have we looked at other vendors at all?
We.
Not other leasing vendors recently, no.
No.
The primary reason is because of the ease of working with them, because of returning them, and they work with our timeline, but yeah, we have not. Their their percentage of what they're getting hasn't significantly increased, it's really the cost of the laptop itself.
Right.
And and the cost of any of those units, there was a dip, and then there was an increase in supply chain problems. Also, one of the things I'd say, Mr. Borsma, is working with American Capital, we've developed a relationship where, throughout the pandemic, when schools couldn't get Chromebooks, couldn't get laptops, couldn't get their hands on materials, we were able to get our hands on materials by having a trusted vendor. So they've been a, they've been a strong partner, just to make sure we're getting those in the hands of folks.
Yeah, that was a great deal, you got two thousand twenty.
Right. It was, it was. Again, we were surprised by it when we specked out what we wanted, got the quote, and and when you're dealing with the vendors, whether it's Dell or HP. And and when you're dealing with uh, the vendors, whether it's Dell or HP, um, there's really, you're only dealing with one, right? So you you do your best to bid all of that, um, but um, again, it was nothing we did on either side of that that um, got, gave us that great price. It was just the nature of the market at that point.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, staff, uh, so uh, there are ten total staff members in in my department, um, including myself. We do everything from Infinit Campus, which is our student information system, um, our instructional technology, we're working with teachers um, in the classroom. Uh, networking security, web and video, and uh, basic help desk support uh, and maintenance for all of our uh, computers. Our current staff has been the same since twenty twen- um, has been the same since twenty twenty. So we we have very stable and um, constant staff. And um, one of the biggest changes in the last two years is that our staff is now working with our Technology Assistance Center students, um, referred to as the crew. And uh, not only our instructional technologists, but all of our staff, sharing our own per- uh, professional experiences with them and helping them in whatever portion of our department that they uh, express interest with. So some have worked with Mr. Slager in the video section, some have worked with me, wanting to be managers or or for technology. So we've, whatever their interests are, we use our experience to um, uh, help them. And then finally, our tech depart- our our, the actual program itself. This year, we've, we employed eleven students, next year, we'll, we have eleven students as well that work with us. They work two to three periods a day, um, every day. Um, and they're servicing all of the Chromebooks, which is a job in itself. And taking all of the walk-in, every time somebody walks in, they're the first person that they greet and talk to. And then they help decide, uh, if they can help them or if they need to uh, seek one of us to give assistance to that staff member or student. And parents. Um, they're, they really, they help everybody, it's really fantastic.
Questions?
Yes.
Do we have any um, new technology we should be looking at that would probably uh, help increase, you know, change up the student environment, like?
So from.
Other stuff that you you might wanna like, let us know that you guys are looking at?
Yeah, from uh, student environment wise, I think uh, Dr. Christopher and uh, department chairs are constantly looking at the software tools that we use with students. We're always looking at what's new and rotating through some of them, um, eliminating some, uh, as um, they mature. An example would be, we used to have one uh, tool that we used for students to do video editing in the cloud. And then we had one that teachers would use to uh, screen capture their computers, like if they were doing a lesson and they needed to create a two or three minute video, they used a a tool. So we used to have two separate tools. The the tool that we use for students to do uh, uh, cloud editing software, I mean, uh, video editing and things now has this screen capture software. So we've eliminated one and bundled it up with something we are already using.
And what I recommend, Mr. Navarro, is saying, uh, when uh, Dr. Christopher gives her report with Dr. Huntington, you'll see the new resources, she'll actually be briefing you about the new sources that, um, and it's in your agenda, uh, that will be coming back to you in June. It won't be till June that we'll ask you to approve those resources. Um, but she'll be walking through some of the new things and that's gonna be coming up in her report. So I might just kind of focus in there, you know, at that point.
Cool.
Questions for Mr. Dusterhoff?
Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you.
A few things, just a, you know, uh, in your folder, a couple of things. I I do have a really interesting speaking of technology. Very interesting um, article about um, how board members can play it safe on social media. And that was, uh, Dr. Shaw requested, it was good in um, the uh, Board Member Journal, Illinois School Board Association Journal. There's also some other things that are going to support um, Dr. Christopher and and Doc Peter Huntington. Then one last item from Mr. Borismar. About student board applications.
Oh yeah, the applications, I just wanted to, uh, we talked, Lewin brought it up last week, I brought it up as well. I just thought the eight days wasn't enough. It was a ten-day span, but it was really eight days for students. So I just thought maybe Friday, May twenty-eighth would be a, Friday, May twenty-sixth could be a deadline for the uh, application.
Right, we we have eighteen so far.
Okay.
I've met with ten students on Friday, uh, today, not as many students. I I I have not received any students that I met which we said it wasn't enough time. The application itself really just expresses interest, the real work students have to do is get those recommendations, letter of recommendation. To change your deadline, you you would have to have a motion and you'd have to vote. So they're coming in pretty, pretty fast and furious so far.
Right.
Um, eighteen is probably more than we expected by the weekend. So you would, you would just have to have a discussion and a motion if you want to change that that deadline um, to a to a different date.
Okay.
So so in other words, the the applicants that are just right now applying is just like a little simple form saying, I'm interested in 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 this.
Right.
But then they have to then, there's a second phase where they have to do like an essay and they have to do all these.
Well, they they don't ever have to do an essay.
Alright, recommendations.
Form that you approved, they're short answer questions.
Okay.
Where we just ask them to provide, you know, give us a little bit of your background, what are your interest in in being. So we didn't do them in a, you know, a large, long essay format because they've got final exams, testing, that kind of thing. And also sometimes for you as board members, reading shorter answers that are really direct, actually help illuminate, who who is this person? So are the letters of recommendation that of course we can provide, you know, background, you know, just who the person is. So we haven't, we haven't received any, you know, I don't think Public Relations has received any, I haven't. But eight eighteen's quite a few to come in, in a in a very short, you know, last of the week, basically. Thanks, yeah, Mr. Navarro.
So with so many students showing such a huge interest, I do feel a little bad that we only can select two. Is there anything that we could possibly do for the others who have shown?
Well, what I would recommend is having a superintendent's advisory council. So you bring those students in and you expose them to what the board does.
Yeah.
You you try to find leadership roles for them. Both of our principals, this is ultimately pertaining to Dr. Green, with Dr. Green in. You know, people have declared themselves um, as interested in leadership, Dr. Green has a leadership council. So I think you create some levels there. It would be, you know, very difficult for you to, and you'd have to go back again to a policy decision you already made to have two. So.
No, I mean, it's okay that we can uh, only have two, I'm just, if so many people are so concerned or are so interested in doing this, it it seems like we should also.
Good, they're good to find a a place for them, right?
Yeah, we could definitely find a place with them so that they can be more involved.
Yeah, I think that that racial, that eighteen coming in in one weekend, if that keeps up, are we gonna have enough time to go through all of them?
You 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 do have to be practical about it, how long you keep it open. You know, sometimes working with teenagers, some of the folks in here, we we create deadlines, create a sense of urgency, create a sense of seriousness. You know, only you can decide that pace, right? And it's up to you, rather, lo- you know, the longer the deadlines open, uh, will that be more applications? What that means in your timeline.
Right, so right now, we're looking at May nineteenth as a deadline, June second is a letter of recommendation.
Right.
July seventeenth, finalists will be interviewed. You can still keep to June second and July seventeenth. I just think, say there's somebody out of town, somebody's out sick. Somebody just didn't look at their splash page last week and they're in a jam this week, whatever the situation may be. I think two weeks was very sufficient for them to uh, get their applications in. So that that's why I'm looking just to push the date back to that Friday, May the twenty-sixth.
I mean.
We thought, we thought it was a simple fix on the the spreadsheet you had sent.
I would agree with you that they probably do need more time, but with the hu- huge number of um, applicants that we're getting, it it seems like it is getting a lot. It is, it is gonna be very hard for us to pick.
Well, it's not about us, it's just about them having the opportunity and that's just what I'm looking at.
Yeah, it is. But like, then again, what are we going to do? How are we gonna be able to make sure that these kids, you know, we can take care of them even after this application thing is done?
Not every student that applies would even qualify though, may not qualify. So you pick your top candidates and maybe then form an advisory board and have to that represent the board. You're not gonna have all eighteen in a leadership position if one is just kind of like, hey, I just did it to do it.
Yeah, sure.
And if they don't get their letter of recommendation in, or if they don't have the GPA, because I think there was a GPA.
Well, we didn't have a minimum GPA requirement, but we would.
We didn't have a minimum GPA, anybody who's.
A good, good standing.
We we put that together, if that's a metric, attendance, GPA, discipline, just as a as a background, you know, but that, we we didn't make any of those uh, you know, absolute.
Anybody who is like.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, and I mean, and it was something like, even we mentioned before, it was already something that we talked about in previous months. It was already starting because I believe when we went to the triple I conference in November of last year, we started, we went to that workshop, Dr. McBride and I, and we saw that and we were thinking about, you know, this would be a really good idea. So we started the conversation going at that time. And even uh, student government, they picked up on it. So it was just something that they were already, i- if a student is really, really interested, you know they're gonna apply right away.
Yeah.
And it's not, and and I um, I would hate to push it further because some kids, you know, they they'll just push it away and and they'll just forget about it and say, oh, I forgot about this, you know, but it, like I said, I I know that um, yeah, I I was really, I was surprised at eighteen that, you know, that many have interest in it. But I think, you know, it's, it'll be a good selection, you know, of students and I I feel that I really think we should leave it, you know, on that due date, to tell you the truth, because then, even if we move it to the twenty-sixth, I don't feel students are going to be really applying for it if they did not, only because they're already studying for exams. It it's already too many activities going on year end. And I I I truthfully think that those ones that were really interested in it and being part of this, they've already applied for it.
I'm just looking as if maybe somebody missed out. I don't want anybody to miss out. It's a cool opportunity.
Yeah.
And if somebody is out of town, there's four thousand students here.
Yeah.
Right, we haven't, if if, you know, certainly if someone came forward, you know, we do this all the time, our classroom teachers, someone has an exigent circumstance. We are getting a lot of teachers, school counselors, deans, they're saying, oh, I have a student who's interested. So if there was someone who said, you know, I had a catastrophic illness, I had a parent, a, you know, a funeral, and something like that, you know, I would I would encourage the board not to say, you know, hey, this is a legitimate reason why the person was excused and we have, you know, all sorts of reasons for that. But one thing that that we wanna keep sight of is, you know, we will wanna engage like, school counselors. Kids will need time to get those letters of recommendations. So we only have, after this Friday, that that sort of narrow week and a half window that staff are still here. So kind of the idea was you express your interest with the application and then you get on to talking to your your references. And we can also, while our staff is still here, get some feedback from them too. So, you know, like I said, it's it's really, this deadline's entirely up to you, you would just need a motion, a second and a vote, as voted on at last week.
And I think that's a good idea, um, good plan. Like you saying, kids might be out of town, sick or whatever, you can always um.
Reach out and say yes.
Yeah, and we can always implement it, you know, put them in the conversation. That way, no one misses out instead of extending the time.
I think another, um, and I just realized this, I think the biggest reason as to why people probably aren't submitting is probably because of submission anxiety. They just need like, okay, I I wanna have like, the perfect submission, but then they just keep editing it and then sometimes they just completely forget about it. So it does, it is like a real thing and there is, there is some say like, maybe they just need more time to finish off their submission.
Well, and at that point, you know, if they could contact Dr. McBride or whoever and say, hey, you know, they can always say, I need more time.
So if they say they need more time, we're going to grant them more time.
Do we have it? Do we have that option in this situation?
Uh, yeah, I would advise the board, you know, a few things. Um, one, if you had someone at a school council, dean, a teacher, you know, we we oftentimes become aware of tough circumstances that students are in and we're not indifferent to those, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't think that tough circumstances, I just missed a deadline. That that's not really a tough circumstance. I also would say, just working with teenagers, deadlines create urgency. And teenagers, in a lifetime of working with teenagers in an academic space, when you create a deadline is is generally when it's gonna get done. Boards require timeliness, boards require attention to detail, boards require, you're already looking for the attributes of what you're looking for. And the publicity on this, you know, they have, I'd probably say the evidence is eighteen and really two school days. That's a pretty high, that's much higher than I thought we would have in just a couple of school days. We haven't heard, I don't know if Dr. Green or Dr. Green, if any students have approached you for more time or if there's any. I don't put anybody on the spot, I just, we we haven't, you know, we haven't heard any of our student leaders or anyone who said that they've applied. So sometimes when you push something out, it just starts to creep away from you.
So I brought it up today, I brought it up today because
Right.
I should've, I should've pushed the issue when we talked about it. Last week, when I did that.
That's okay, yeah, you guys decide, you know, like like I said, we would just need some direction on it if we change it. And that that that's, that's really up to you, all of you.
Right.
What's everybody's headspace then? Do you guys think that there should be more time or do you guys think that there?
Well, just looking at the time, I mean, it's it's one week more and I I just feel like, even if we extend it to twenty-sixth and if then we have one of those situations where a student says, you know, I need more time after the twenty-sixth, then where does it stop, you know?
Well, that's where the deadline is and that's where they don't take any time after that.
Yeah.
I think two, two full weeks, I just thought that that was a
Yeah.
A good time. If you guys don't think that, then you don't, but.
Yeah, I'm more on the, kind of keeping it like it is, how we set it up, that's just my thing.
And then just leave it open to those students to say, you know, to contact them and say, hey, I need more time, you know, can I give me another few days or something? And that's okay.
Yeah, it, I mean, like, it doesn't seem that there is anybody who has expressed that they do need more time.
I don't know, I I've, I haven't talked to uh, more than two students in the last week, so I don't know. Is Veronica still on the line or?
Yes, Veronica, you're still on the line?
Yeah, Veronica, you.
Yeah, I'm here.
What is your, your thoughts on this?
Um, well, just having, so, you know, like Dr. McBride said, working with teenagers, uh, usually the deadline is when things are going to get done. So um, if we push it out, again, like, the later we put it, the later we're going to get more applications. So I'm, I would like to keep the deadline the same.
If it wasn't finals week, I think it would be a good, you know, extended two weeks, but because it's finals,
Right.
they're gonna use that excuse to say, oh, I need more time. And if your cutoff is, whatever it was, the twenty-sixth, then that's your cutoff, so they're not gonna submit anything. Whereas now, it's due the nineteenth, they're gonna submit something.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna motion then. Yeah, it's completely, we're at your service, I mean, okay.
All right.
All right. That is, that is my report.
Okay.
Yeah, it it is probably a good idea for us to keep that deadline and stick stick to a stricter schedule.
Maybe for next year, we'll move.
That's right, maybe for next year.
Yeah, well.
Well, definitely.
And in part of the time, it was the timing of this board, it it just seemed properly to get you seated first, right? You know, and and not be that on the other side, make decisions without, without you seated first, I think that, you know.
Yeah. All right. Information reports, curriculum report.
You're ready to go.
All right, so, reading board, no problem, no problem at all. Um, I am first going to talk to you about resources for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So really, um, we kind of have two buckets at what we look at when we look at resources for a school year. One is like instructional resources, which are more like textbooks, nonfiction, technology pieces. And then other is more like fiction, English novels, plays, et cetera. So I wanna talk a little bit about the process and what you'll see before you next month, um, hopefully for approval. So our um, our teacher course teams um, look at the resources they have. And then uh, if they determine the resource, they wanna continue using it, the department chair knows that, but if they determine like, hey, we need a new. but if they determine like, hey, we need a new resource, they work with the department chair to come, have vendors send them supplies to look at. Um, they determine a resource, an instructional resource, and then the department chair comes in to a meeting. Um, I'm there, Dr. Webb Ray, Assistant Principal for Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Croy from the business office, uh, looking at the cost, and then also Kate Fahey has joined us for the last couple of years, especially if it's a technology tool. And so we go through with the department chairs, all their requests, highlighting anything that would be new, and then I bring that entire, I share the whole list with you, but we will really seek approval for the new resources. So you can see there are really four new resources that fit in that instructional resource, which is really kinda, again, nonfiction textbooks, um, technology. Um, I just wanna highlight for you on the list, um, three of the resources are tied to dual credit, meaning JJC kinda has to approve our resource, and also the transition English. Transition English means the students will, if they pass the course an acceptable level, they will go to JJC in a credit, college credit bearing class, kinda Dr. McBride alluded to that in his earlier report about legislative. And then one is just a newer piece of software to allow our students in music technology to create music. So that's kinda that bucket. Then I wanna talk to you a little bit about the other bucket, which is kinda like the English novels, more fiction. So same thing, the English, or the course team determines, do we wanna use the same resources, or do we need something new? And then they have a process to work with their department chair, um, they submit a form, and then they take it to the whole English department, and they review what it is we, they would like to use, um, and that team then forwards appropriate, um, novels, books, et cetera, to a leadership team, which reviews it with one of the team members that recommended it. This year's leadership team was the English department chair, assistant principal, Dr. Webb Ray, and then we had, um, one of our English teachers, who is also a principal candidate, be on that team to review it, and then, again, with their approval, we bring those books to you. Again, this year, you're gonna see three new resources in this bucket. Um, this is largely gonna be, again, this new, um, senior English seminar course where we, you kinda need approval support of what is called a local advisory panel. It's some JJC, and also in conjunction with a school that has already been approved for this. So you'll see the books there, and then also, um, you see a new book for our film, uh, literature and film class that they would like to do. And then lastly, um, we share with you any books that had been previously taught, but were maybe cycled out for a little bit, and now we wanna bring them back. So there's a, a few books on that list, you'll see them predominantly in our AP Language and Composition course, our AP Literature course, where those teachers try to cycle books kinda in and out, kinda tied to what's on the AP test, keep the course fresh, and then lastly, you'll see some updated versions of our dual credit courses in English, where the JJC team says, hey, we need you to offer this book. So those are the, kinda the three big buckets. Uh, the last thing you'll see next month is when we have a multi-year contract for something, that comes before the board, and we would like to renew our math resource, we've used it for the past three years. Um, a lot of, you know, teachers are very happy with it, um, and so we'd like to do another three-year contract. Obviously, there's benefits, um, for our financial stake for doing something in a three-year cycle. So that's what I have to tell you about the resources.
And these books and resources, they're all, you know, contained in a memo, they have all of those attachments. Um, it's long for you to discern, take a look, I think we'll be, we'll be approving those in June twenty-sixth, at that, at that meeting. Doctor H?
Uh, the other item is, I was just gonna talk a little bit about our curriculum committee meeting, which we had a week ago, um, and we had a presentation by World Savvy. Um, World Savvy is a organization we're interested in partnering with because they help with teaching global competence. And you might think that, oh, global competence, does that help with students' awareness of geography, or what is it? But really, it's about helping students get the skills and dispositions to thrive and navigate a diverse, complex, and ever-changing world. So that's a lot, and they really narrowed, instead of, you know, covering all these things that their, uh, global competence matrix works on, they really focused, KK, who was our presenter, um, focused really on three items, and she said, helping teachers to narrow to a couple of items is really resourceful. So the three items she focused on was, one, um, that you find comfort with ambiguity in unfamiliar situations. We know as our students enter a job force, and we know about jobs changing, that they're gonna probably have some job in the course of their lifetime that doesn't even exist now, that makes a lot of sense, and how do you navigate and find comfort in that space? The second thing she talked about was choosing empathy, and we might talk to students a lot about choosing empathy, but it's also helping teachers, like, how would you teach that? And so she talked about recognizing emotion in other people, and taking a perspective of a situation, maybe suspending your judgment, while, um, looking at the perspective. And so the third thing she talked about was collaboration around solving problems. And again, she highlighted, like, you can't just assume students, when you ask them to collaborate, are gonna know how to collaborate. You have to explicitly teach students to collaborate, you have to model what collaboration looks like, and another powerful tool when we teach collaboration is to allow reflection. So she really highlighted those three items, and it was really important because we have this company coming in to work with the teachers who are gonna be taking students on this, these international travel trips. And doesn't it seem appropriate that she would highlight those three things? Um, finding comfort with ambiguity in unfamiliar situations, guess what? That's probably gonna happen when you travel out of the country to a new location. Choosing empathy, right, you're gonna go into a different culture, trying to understand, take perspective of that culture. And then the third thing, collaboration, of course, on the trip. So, um, doctor, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson was there, and we know she's unable to be here tonight, and I know Mr. Travis had a conflict. Dr. Shaw, I don't know if there's anything you wanna add about hearing about, uh, hearing about World Savvy and their global competence?
No, I, um, she was a great presenter, I really appreciated everything that she had to say. Um, the, the big thing for me was just the resiliency piece in teaching students how to work through tough situations. So I think that that's something that a lot of, um, we're seeing in education, that a lot of students need a little bit more experience in, and I like that that was built into what she had to present us.
Thank you for that. Um, I'm going to wrap up our presentation, talking a little bit about our wrap-up work that we did with Troy Gobble. Um, we met with Troy, he came in and worked with our teams, um, pretty much every month, uh, since the beginning of the school year. On, uh, May eleventh, we wrapped up that work, and, uh, the morning, we had two separate groups, the morning time was with our deans, our social workers, school psychologists, um, and who am I missing, counselors? Sorry about that, they're gonna be mad at me. Um, to work on creating visual supports to help our staff understand and know our systematic systems of support for students. I know it's a lot of words. Um, but our goal this entire year was to, um, work as a team to develop and, um, be able to support students, not only that are struggling learners, but to ensure that we're making sure that we're making, um, students take coursework that they're able to do. So, uh, increasing that rigor for some students, um, looking at different ways to be able to support those students. And we utilized in your packet, we gave you that, one of the visuals that came out of that work, um, and that's the, um, Support Set a Glance. Support Set a Glance, sorry, my, of course, my computer, you know, went into sleep mode. Thank you, Dr. McBride, you probably will get it up faster than I will. And so, if you look, we start, every, every student starts at tier zero, and that's where counselors get to know their students, get to understand what their, um, goals are in life, and then help them with their personalized course placement. Um, then, obviously, every student has access to tier-one type of interventions, so if a student needs just a little bit more time, or maybe a second look at something, these are the academic supports that we have at place, things like compass, the core instruction, kitchen table, student-selected tutoring, um, and then in student support services, we would have things like the compass lessons, our Fresh Start program, PE classes, our resilient, resilient youth curriculum. And then we move down, and you can see, if I'm a student that's having, um, a little bit more struggle, or if a teacher says, gosh, they're just not getting these things, how can I help them? And you can see we have different options of supports, steering academic supports, as well as student support, in that targeted two range. And then our lowest, um, support, or the lowest amount of students level support, that tier-two, three group of students, we're looking at students that are lacking prior grade-level knowledge, so they need more than just a refresher or support in the current work they're working on, they may need some foundational level skills, and those are the type of programs that we have available for those students that need more, um, more than what a traditional student might need as far as support services. So that's a visual support, we will be rolling this out to our teaching staff, a lot of times, teachers use all of their tricks, you know, have, have, do all the things, and then they're not sure where to go next. And so this is a nice visual support for our teaching staff, as well as students and counselors to kind of go through that systematic, levels of support. Any questions? It's a really, really great experience. Oh, and obviously, in the afternoon, Troy worked with our department chairs, and they're really, we're really focusing on our PLCs, we're looking at results. We wanna make sure that our, our curriculum and our, our evaluation of student work is focusing on those results, and he helped the department chairs, um, get ready for, uh, PLC work in that regard. Any questions? I scream on the floor.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. John and I just wanted to start off in saying welcome to the new board members. We're very excited to be working with you. A lot of new faces that will be around here, as we have been really entrenched in the hiring process. So we're excited about, um, welcoming our new staff in as well. Uh, at Central Campus, you saw it tonight, your sermon, my assistant principal, uh, who has been, um, my, my colleague for twelve years now. Uh, the two of us started at Central together, uh, twelve years ago in these positions. And as she rides off into the sunset, um, we will have a new assistant principal, which, thank you for appointing Jason Osbell, who has, um, been a longtime staff member, and then also, uh, just a couple of days ago, you actually approved Taysha Goff, who will be our new dean. So we're excited, we'll have some new faces as we welcome the class of twenty-twenty-seven at Central Campus. But very excited, uh, to have that happen. May is a busy time, as John and I were meeting with, um, all the building administration today, and we were looking at our schedules, uh, it is fast and furious. It's an exciting time of the year, um, it's a bittersweet time of the year, as you listen to our seniors, um, they are excited to graduate, um, but there's that little hesitation of, you know, leaving high school and a lot of their friends and all the fond memories that they had. But as you read through the report, um, you see that it is just a time where there's so much taking place and so much going on, between concerts, performances, and then we've had our wonderful plant sale that has taken place. So so much to be excited about, so many great celebrations, and then as you look through the sporting, um, news here that Mike Dwyer has provided for us, a lot of great things going on in sports, and they'll be wrapping up, and so we wish them the best as they head into, uh, the state playoffs that are coming up in the next couple of weeks.
One area that I would like to highlight this month is community service hours. So we have a graduation requirement, as you know, of forty, the last few years, we've had some modifications due to COVID, but we are back to requiring forty hours, and as an administrative team, we have had to take a look at doing a better job of providing and communicating community service opportunities to our students, to just communicating about community service to our students better. Um, we felt like towards the end of the school year, was a very busy time for everybody, staff and students, that we had way too many students who were not fully submitting their hours into our respective system, which is now School Links. So we felt administratively, we had to do a better job to make it a better and more efficient process for everyone involved, our students, so that's one big check, seniors in particular, as they get towards closer to graduation, so that they have one less thing to do, and of course, our staff, particularly our guidance counselors who work so closely with our students. So I would attribute a number of things of why, um, it has improved dramatically this year. Um, one, I would say this is the second year that we have had a community service team, um, that I'm a part of. A big thank you to Dr. Lori Christopher, who's been a big part of that, Grant Ferkeluk, our guidance department chair, Jen Crosby, who works in our College and Career Center in the guidance department, Mr. Brian Lesnar, our activities director, Jeanette Castillo has helped us out with that group, Angela Adolf has been a great help. I mention this group of people because I do believe collectively, we have looked at ways that we can, one, promote community service opportunities, we've hosted some community service events that we've had as our partnership with Will County Sheriff Fest. Um, Dr. McBride has been a great influence in us having our Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day on, instead of day off. And, and actually, it was just mentioned, um, just this past weekend, Dr. McBride and Dr. Huntington with the Will Grow event in our Fairmont community. So I think certainly hosting some of those events, but then even promoting those to students, and then offering some incentives for students to complete all forty community service hours. We had some of our dances, like Homecoming and Twerp, we were able to provide some free tickets in a raffle if students had completed all forty community service hours. We had found in previous years, the last couple of weeks of the school year, we would have many seniors who had not entered their community service hours or, um, or completed them. And, um, I wanna also thank a couple other staff members, because this last few weeks, uh, this last few week stretch, as we get closer into the school year, Travanna Green, one of our deans, Robert Beach, one of our school guidance counselors, took a look at the remaining students who still needed to enter and complete their, their community service hours, and made more direct contacts with them, as well as all of our guidance counselors and deans. I'm very proud to announce that at this moment, we have four seniors who aren't quite there yet, and we are still doing everything we can to get them to the finish line. And I would just say in years past, I will just say it was a lot more than four at this point, so. So I just wanted to take some time to really try to give you a summary of what I felt we needed to do a better job of, um, the results that we have seen, and I really did have to mention all those people's names because it has been quite a collective effort in making the process a lot better. Yes?
Is that years past, just the pandemic times, or was it always even?
It was prior to, yeah. Like I said a couple of times, we realized we needed to do a better job, and I'm, I'm proud of what we've done, and we're gonna look to do even a better job in years to come.
Four is a good number.
We're gonna get those four.
We'll use that.
Yeah, yeah, a lot more than four. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Overnight field trips. We have another Shakespearean, uh, declension of what is happening here at East Campus and Central Campus, so much going on. Uh, you know, for time's sake, I know you guys are very busy, probably the most exciting thing is starting our auditorium sound and light renovation, that's a total renovation, also, members of the community, people here will see, a roofing project is, is coming. But also taking a look at energy costs, Bill did a very nice job of talking about how we try to contain those energy costs, and, um, keep our eye on that, that cost for these large facilities, it can be very, very costly. Another thing, maintenance, custodial grounds, all working overtime on graduation, making campus look right, setup, all the support we need for that. Uh, just a few things, uh, CWC lobby furniture, if you take a look at it on your way out, really, hopefully, needs to be replaced. We're concluding a traffic study here at East Campus, um, sometimes people call it a. Sometimes people call it a parking issue, I would probably say it's a traffic issue with two-lane roads out here. So we're looking at what might be some recommendations to decongest in the morning and the afternoon. Doing a few repairs of the A fields, and then you might notice right out here, we're doing some moving around and changing of our trophy cases to update those displays. Questions for me or for Bill?
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve of Consent Agenda Items Two through Number 12?
I'll move.
And I can second that. Are there any questions? Right. It's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Lopez Caniva. Roll call. Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Borzma?
Yes.
Simone Rogers? Shaw?
Yeah.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right, we have no policy updates. All right, announcements.
We do have some action considerations under AL.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, it's just like, okay, all right, yes, that's right, oh my gosh, what am I thinking about? All right, do I have a motion to approve the floor abatement project on Central Campus?
I did have a question about that.
I'm sorry, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, and I can second that. Are there any questions? All right, Mr. Borzma, now you can.
I do, oh, so this project, this is for the floor, correct?
Right.
And the floor abatement. Is that something that'll be, that needs to be done? I'm not familiar with that area of the school.
Right, it's an ongoing project that we're doing at Central, primarily because most of the asbestos abatement we're doing, and Bill can fill this in, is in the floor. It's hard asbestos, so you'll see we have sort of luxury vinyl tile or VCT that is replacing some of the old weathering linoleum tile. But also underneath that is where you're going to find hard asbestos. So it's just best practice to start getting that hard asbestos out, and summer's the best time to do it.
Anything to add to that, Bill?
Progressively do, walking through the building and doing it.
Yes, the second floor on the south side, we're primarily doing that area there. And a landing by door number three. And it is encapsulated right now, it's under some VCT tile, asbestos tile under the
Right.
VCT tile, the mastic, so we have to remove the mastic and asbestos containing the tile.
Okay.
Is this after First Start?
It would be, probably the work is scheduled in July, so it would be after First Start, First Start's in June.
It would be, yeah, it would be in July.
Yep.
This should be a pretty quick product, that would be.
Should be, yeah.
All right, all right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Lopez Caniva. All right, roll call. Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yeah.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Borzma?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the three-year technology lease with American Capital Financial Services for teacher laptops?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? Very none, roll call. Travis?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Borzma?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yeah.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. Then do I have a motion to approve the three-year yearbook agreement with Justice?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Simone Rogers and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? Very none, roll call. Shaw?
Yeah.
Borzma?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, then do I have a motion to approve the lease agreement with Xerox Financial Services for the multifunction ABI machines?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Simone Rogers and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? Roll call. Borzma?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yeah.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, now we are, okay.
Now some announcements, lots going on. Board members, I would really encourage you, these are great things, they're signature things. ADM, Wednesday, Central Walk and Talk, love to see any of you there that would like to do that. Site visit to Downers Grove North, apologies to my colleagues at Lyons Township High School, I did not leave them out there. If you want to see a great performance Saturday night, the big show, 7:00 PM, great choir performance on display. May 23rd, first group of seniors that will be exiting early, they will be out. May 31st is the last day of school for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. Graduation is at 4:00 PM on June 3rd. And we don't have another regularly scheduled board meeting until June 26th unless something comes up or we have a flood of applications and.
We need your help.
You know, we need help, so. So those are the announcements.
All right, just need then a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Simone Rogers and second by Mr. Borzma, all in favor?
Oh, I just got you at 10, it's not even 10:01, that's a good time. Thanks, everybody.